Seeing as how we are all in our places with bright shiny faces, we'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, we invite you to stand this morning and join with us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, first item of business this morning is the consent calendar. At this time, does any member of the Board have anything they want removed from consent for conversation?
I have none.
I see none. Any members of the public have anything they identified on the consent calendar that they would like to remove for conversation? Something on consent that you want removed? No? You're just anxious to speak, huh? Okay. Then, without any objection, I guess we'll go ahead. Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. We have the motion Holmes, second Montgomery. Can we have a roll call, please?
Gore. Whitehead.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Euler.
Aye, thank you so much. This is the time for public comment where members of the public might address the Board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that we cannot take action on items raised under public comment. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and give us an idea of who you are and where you're from when you step up. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Officer Bill Roach and I'm speaking on behalf of the Humane Society of Sierra Foothills. I'm a retired sergeant from a 29-year career on the California Highway Patrol, a retired Colonel from a parallel 34-year career in the U.S. Army Reserve, and a former Director of Security at four Kaiser Permanente Hospitals and currently a court-certified humane officer. I have been employed by the Humane Society since August of 2017. In this capacity, I investigate community complaints relating to animal cruelty, abuse, and neglect. I also educate the public on animal care and I attend community meetings representing the Humane Society. I'm a graduate of the state-certified Animal Law Enforcement Training Academy, a member of the California Animal Welfare Association, and a member of the Sacramento County Regional Animal Cruelty Task Force. Since being hired, I've investigated over 60 complaints of animal cruelty in Placer County. I provided you with some of my detailed experience and background to underscore that I am expertly qualified to investigate, analyze, and take legal action against animal cruelty offenders. And although I've been in the law enforcement security industry for the past 46 years, I came to quickly realize that animal cruelty is so widespread and hidden that many public officials and law enforcement agencies don't fully understand or appreciate the level of expertise a court-certified humane officer can bring to the community. Animal cruelty is more than just a legal issue, it's a community issue. A growing and compelling body of research has confirmed if you improve animal welfare in a community, you improve public safety for everyone. The Humane Society of Sierra Foothills is not a traditional intake shelter. Our efforts are directed at educating people and gaining compliance with animal welfare laws. However, when there is a continuing course of conduct where animals are neglected and suffering needlessly, we will aggressively investigate and enforce these laws. If I were to task, if I were to ask each of you individually what constitutes animal cruelty, I'd probably get that many different answers. And that is the challenge that we face in this industry. I thank you for your attention this morning and I look forward to seeing you again at other community events. Thank you.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Beth Gonzalez, I live in Rockland. I serve as co-director of Placer People of Faith Together, a grassroots organization of faith communities in Placer County. We speak for the voiceless and for people who need our help. I'm here to support affordable housing in Placer County. The buzzwords or cliches of the Affordable Housing Task Force meetings were "affordable housing just doesn't pencil in," words that mean there is not enough profit for the developer or the investors. So Placer People of Faith Together urges you, as elected representatives, to focus on the needs of everyone in the community, to create shelter for everyone. Please use your power wisely. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Rabbi Susan Conforti, I live in District 5. I want to congratulate Ms. Montgomery on her new position. We're going to miss you terribly and nobody who comes after you will measure up.
I'm sure they'll be fine.
I wanted to talk, I'm part of, I'm co-president of PPOF, Placer People of Faith Together, and I wanted to speak to all of you about 2-1-1. We're the largest county in the state that doesn't have it and we can't just use computers. A lot of poor people don't have them. Having something on the phone, being able to just get all the services you need available to you on the phone with 2-1-1 is something we're working hard on and I wanted to let the Board know. Please support it when you have a chance. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Chris Johnson, I've lived in Placer County 30 years. I just want to relate a story that has happened in the last week, but it's obviously an ongoing problem. I have a friend and she's 89-years-old, she lives in a 50-year-old trailer. She was in my choir, I've known her 15 years, and she's on very limited income, less than $1,600 a month. Her trailer falling apart, so I've been trying to work on different programs to try and help her out. So finally I said to her, "You know Lois, maybe you should consider Meals on Wheels." Because she's 89 and she's still doing all this herself. And she says, "Oh, I don't know, I can afford that." I go, "Don't worry about affording, you know, let me just call for you." So I call Meals on Wheels, you know, with the agency that we've hired here, and the answer I get is, "I'm sorry, we have a closed waiting list." I go, "Closed waiting list? What does that mean?" "That means I can't even take your name." "Oh." "Because we don't get enough money from the state to fund this program." "Oh." So I hang up with her and I think, "Oh my goodness, this does not sound ..." I email our Assemblyman, who's a stone's throw from this woman's home, and have heard nothing back from his office. I will stop there on the way home today. And then I went on the website and I found out, "Oh, well, we're part of this Agency Four thing," and I don't know what that is. So, you know, there's a name and a number, I guess I'll give them a call. And the people there say, "Oh yeah, we have a 200-person waiting list and we serve 400." And, "Yeah, it's closed." Well, that doesn't sound very good either. I have a friend that's on the Board for Aging in El Dorado County and she, I said to her, "Are you guys, you know, have a waiting list on your Meals on Wheels?" "No, we don't have a waiting list. We serve between 9,000 and 10,000 people. Our county cooks the food, we don't use a contractor, and we really don't do means testing, so when someone calls and says they need this, we try and serve them." Well, there was a meeting at the state Capitol of everybody who's on these commissions. And sadly, there was no one there from Placer County and no one there from this Area 4 Agency. This is a serious problem. We can't just contract these services out and never know what's really happening. I think two people on a waiting list is bad, but we actually have 130, even though we only serve 230 people. So I think we need to get serious on this and I'm hoping that you guys are going to put this high up on your agenda. I will be meeting afterwards with the new, she's brand-new Meals on Wheels Coordinator to try and understand what's really the problem here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Burkema, I'm a Placer County resident for over 20 years. I wanted to welcome Bonnie Gore and thank you, Jennifer Montgomery. We are ecstatic that you're going to be helping our force out, so we wanted to thank you for your service. I'm here today to talk about transparency in government and what I would like to talk about is document dumping. So in December, we had tens of thousands of documents dumped on us as residents. I cannot believe that everyone is reading these documents, everyone on the Supervisors' Board, everyone in Planning. So I wanted to read, a document dump as defined by Wikipedia is responding to adversary's request for information by presenting the adversary with a large amount of data that is transferred in a manner that indicates unfriendliness, hostility, or legal conflict between the transmitter and the receiver. And I think that's what's happening in Placer County right now. In December, we had all these documents, we had multiple things on the agenda such as Tiny Houses on Wheels, and thank you, Jennifer Montgomery, for that also. I know you played a big part in helping us to put that off for a while. I think that, in addition to that, we had several large projects going on. So Sunset Area, the largest project in Placer County, was happening during this. Placer residences in District 4, White Hawks, Habbad, we had all these documents just thrown at us and we made a request to Placer Planning to get extensions on these. We asked for a large extension for the Sunset Project and we also asked for White Hawks and Placer residences. This also happened over Christmas. A lot of people have religious holidays and it seems very adversarial. And the response from Placer Planning to me was, "The Director looked at it and we decided it wasn't warranted." I think that what's not warranted is to not listen to the people that elect you and put you in office. So I think that looking at, we have Freedom of Information Acts, we have California Public Records Access, we request these records and then never get a response. It goes to the grand jury, it's been to the grand jury a couple times now, and the same subjects keep coming up. We're not getting the responses that I think we deserve as the public. And so I would strongly request, I did this last time, but I would request that we get the Whistleblower Act for the public in place so that there's some accounting from the Auditor's Office so that when we put a records request in, we actually get the information back. We've asked for surveys for traffic, population, sewer, we get nothing. We get nothing from anyone and it just seems like it's very adversarial. We would rather be working on housing and feeding the poor than to be working on documents. Thank you for your time.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Samantha Maciel and I'm the Associate Field Representative for Senator Kamala Harris. I know you guys previously worked with my colleague Sydney. I'm based out of the Sacramento office, we cover 30 counties, and I'm here to introduce myself today because I will now be representing Placer County, so I just wanted to put a face to the name for you all. I grew up just over the hill in Truckee, so I'm really familiar with this area and the unique issues of Placer County and rural counties like Placer County. So I look, I work forward to working with all of you and, you know, I just want to ensure that this transition will be seamless for you all and that we're able to maintain all of the relationships that Sydney and the other members of this AC office have built over the years. Please feel free to contact me for any information that you guys may need or any help that you need with letters of support and anything like that. And thank you so much for your time today.
Did you, do you have any business cards?
I don't have my business cards yet, but I can leave my contract though. Yeah, I'll get them, and then when I get them, I can come back in.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, Board members and county staff. I'm Brian Estes, CAL FIRE Unit Chief for the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit and the Placer County Fire Chief. I wanted to speak real briefly to you this morning to just give you an update on, I think, some very positive outcomes of the hard work of both local and state officials in Placer County in kind of the post-campfire world that we are living in. There's been a tremendous focus on fuel reduction in Placer County with the support of this Board and all the collaborative efforts within the agencies, public safety agencies in Placer County. And as you all know, on January 9th, Governor Newsom did issue the executive order N-519, which directed CAL FIRE as an agency to work with over 30 collaborative agencies in defining priorities for fuel reduction projects and community risk reduction in wildfire prevention. There were over 400 projects identified through a risk analysis in the state, and at the end of the day, 35 were chosen as state priorities. There were two priorities chosen within the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit out of those finals. And I look at that as a success story. Our neighbors to the north and the south were not nearly as successful as we are. So I look at that as a, you know, a systematic approach to us working with the Board closely, the state working with local government emergency service providers, and this is the result of, I think, that hard work and those efforts. So two projects have been identified. The first is the North Fork of the American Shaded Fuel Break, which you all know basically protects the area from the city of Colfax down to the city of Auburn. And it protects approximately 13 communities, over 77,000 people that live in those communities, and encompasses about 4,300 acres of fuel reduction areas that have been identified. It's a mix of land, 100% of it falls within either SRA, which is State Responsibility Area, or LRA, Local Responsibility Area, that has some sort of contractual agreement with the state of California. The good thing about that is it allows CAL FIRE, as the lead agency, to be able to efficiently work across all those ownership layers, which I think will be really beneficial. We are waiting for one key factor in this, and as you probably all saw in the 45-day report, that is the Governor's promise for SEQA relief. Everything is in place, the ownership agreements are in place, the money is in place. We have identified and been given authority to redirect our 3C crews out of the Placer Center in Christian Valley to the North Fork of the American full-time. We're also going to be receiving one of the five National Guard crews that have been allocated to the state, two in Fresno, one in Monterey, one in Shasta, and the fifth here in Placer County. That's due to start on the ground on April 1st. So we are really reliant on that SEQA relief so we can really start. There's also some additional funding mechanisms. Right now, we're looking at between $900,000 and $1.3 million specifically associated with the 45-day report that will be allocated to contract efforts. So all that combined, we hope is going to see some really good efforts. You know, this realistically, that North Fork Project has anywhere from, you know, a one to 15-year lifespan. If you look at it from immediate work mitigation to maintenance work, it's got some short-term effects and it's got some moderate and long-term effects, but I think it's a really, really good priority we've identified in Placer County. And with the fire history in the American River Canyon drainages, I think it absolutely makes sense. So I just wanted to give you that update and thank you very much to every one of the Board members for your support of fire services in Placer County. And specifically wanted to congratulate Supervisor Montgomery. I know you're going to be working very, very closely with our agency into the future at a state level. Thank you for your support in your district along that 80 corridor, so thank you very much.
All right, anybody else under public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board of Supervisors. I come prepared with a handout.
Okay.
Drop my phone.
I am Susan Parizio and I am here to talk about the Humane Society of the Sierra Foothills. The packet that you just received has on the front what is more or less a worksheet, and it's based on the Articles of Incorporation that the Humane Society of the Sierra Foothills incorporated under in 2008. They listed seven tenets, the principles of why they incorporated. And I would ask you to look over those seven incorporation principles and see whether or not they're actually engaged in most of those or meeting those because that was their reason for existing here in Placer County. You'll also find attached three screenshots, one of them from the Humane Society's website, animalplace.com, two of them from an organization in Nevada County, Sammy's Friends, that does a lot of good work. And you will see that in 2015, they helped 3,200 animals and spent more than $345,000 doing so. What they take in goes out. They have a shelter, they deal with the public, they do public good. They're very much a public benefit, Humane Society. I think it's important, because I asked in the last meeting that you consider agendizing this, I think it's important to take a good, hard look at the foundation of why they started here in Placer County and whether they're in fact an adjunct to animal services or an agency that does something that's repetitive for the animal services. Since coming here on your last board meeting, February the 26th, it was a very productive appearance here, my comment time for me. I have had contact from three different individuals from Placer County who found my information and contacted me, one to exchange information, one out of great concern over some instances that they were aware of, and another person who was concerned about retribution if they were to come forward and talk to you. And I said, "Just wait and when it's agendized, there's your opportunity." That's pretty much it. It's a repeat of what I had to say last time with more information. I will be here again on your next board meeting and I am going to bring for you all of their 990s. They're good reading and they're very interesting. And with this that you have in front of you, if you hold on to it and take a look at their 990s, you might have some different things to fill into those blank spots. So until the next board meeting, I wish you all a good day and thank you for letting me have the time to comment.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else under public comment? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to Board Member and County Executive Reports. Any Board members have anything they want to report? I can't imagine.
Yeah, hard to believe, I know. And yes, I just wanted to confirm what everybody, I think, probably saw last week in the Auburn Journal or my District 5 email newsletter. I will be stepping down at the end of the month as the 5th District Supervisor, the 31st will be my last day. I have been given the honor and the extreme and maybe slightly dubious responsibility of being the Director of the Governor's Forest Management Task Force, which will be taking on obviously forest management and fire issues throughout California. It will probably be equally as full-time as this position, if not more, but having struggled with the decision, because it's a tough decision to decide to leave your term in the middle of it, I just recognize that this is an opportunity for not just the people of the 5th District in Placer County, but everyone in California to have a voice at the state level that has a true understanding of what it means to live in the wildland-urban interface. I'm married to a firefighter, have lived 30 years in the woods, and I just think the perspective and the vision that I can bring to the state to help start taking some real steps towards solving this 35-day, or the 45-day plan, the 35 projects out of that, huge first step on that. So just thank you, everyone. We do have an agendized item later that we'll talk about the process for filling the seat, but I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for your support. Not an easy decision to make and I will miss you all.
Thank you.
Chairman, is there anything you wanted to add before the agendized?
No, I think you mentioned that we will have an agendized item to go through the particulars filling the vacancy.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody think they can top that? No? Okay, all right, then we'll go ahead and leave it at that. Thank you very much, Jeffrey. And we will move on to our first item, it is our 9:05 timed item, that is Health and Human Services. This is the NACO Achievement Award, joint with the Gold Country Wildlife, and recognition of Dana Miller and Mr. Nix. Oh, there he is, good morning.
I am, poof. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board, and congratulations Supervisor Montgomery, that's awesome, and welcome Supervisor Gore. Absolutely. Thank you for giving me a few moments to talk about some of our award-winning innovations and progress we've made in the Animal Services Division and really as a result of the partnerships that we've been able to develop over the last couple of years in our new facility. One of the statistics we like to look at, one of our main statistics, is called the live release rate of dogs and cats, which is essentially just every successful outcome of finding an adoption to any animal that's in our care. You can see that it started to tick up in around 2011, '12 when I got here, but it really exploded, of course, when the new facility opened for business and we got to move in and really start to utilize that facility to build these partnerships to make it all Comparing our live release rate with some of the national averages, clearly Placer County's doing very well. The national average for dogs, for example, is 81.5%, Placer County's standing at 92.7%, which is really awesome. The 90% range was always our target, we shot right through that this last year, so doing very well there. And then if you look at the statistics for cats, national average is only 65.4% because that population is considerably more challenging to find homes for them frequently. And Placer County's 92% is really astonishing for a municipal shelter. We have people all over the country trying to emulate our programs at this point to try to improve their live release rates. The number of animals adopted out, you know, as a result of that, of course, again, that 2016 mark, you can see it shoots straight up to 996 animals this year with a really steep curve as soon as we opened, largely because we brought in other animals from different shelters and facilities because we have the capacity to do that. And people trust us now. We've really got past that stigma of being the dog pound. So if someone wants to surrender an animal to us, before they were probably hesitant and now they feel confident that we'll be able to take care of it and find a new home. So the animals have really been pouring in, plus we've made more partnerships with some of our city partners in our jurisdiction as well. So our animal control officers have been doing well, of course, they've expanded out again over the 8,260 calls, doing a lot of great work in our community stray animal pickup, wildlife, which we'll talk about in a moment, since we're the rural-urban-wildland interface that Jennifer is so aware of. We do quite a bit of work with wildlife, there really simply is no one else to do it. The state can't cover it and it's just the right thing to do to rescue some wildlife animals, especially babies when their parent is deceased. Tahoe Beach Patrol's going well, assisting other jurisdictions is expanding. Of course, we investigate cruelty and animal welfare and respond to complaints, but also they've expanded into meeting with schools and really pushing education out there and the Placer County branding, again, you know, helping that stigma that we're not a dog pound anymore, we're an animal care facility. And that's been very successful. We're plugging in basically to every event that's appropriate for us to do so. We've also completed a lot of training in emergency response, so our county is now prepared to respond to a wildfire or other disaster, to the point where we're able to send out mutual aid into other areas. We sent a couple of officers into the Town of Paradise area almost right after the fires were out really, and picked up and cared for animals that survived, which was remarkable how many of them survived. I don't know how they do it, but they find a little space somewhere and, you know, they're singed, but they make it. So we're picking them up and then we put food and water out there for the ones that we couldn't capture and make sure that they were cared for until we did get another chance to pick them up. And we sent a kennel lieutenant and our vet there to the emergency evacuation centers open and treated animals that were wounded. You can see in the photo there, the cat has some burned paws, of course, we saw that quite a bit. And all of those animals were cared for and recovered. And now we're transferring some of the unclaimed animals into Placer County Shelter to help find homes, now that it's exhausted, that the owners cannot be found. And we've adopted 11 dogs and 13 cats in the last month. So it's also possible by expanding our volunteer program. We've gone from maybe 20 volunteers back in 2012 to about 120 with nearly 10,000 hours of service. That's approaching seven full-time equivalents, which has made it all possible for us to basically keep the same staffing level with all these accomplishments and more animals coming in and keeping our budget flat, essentially the same as it was when we were across the street. So, you know, the volunteers are essential to that and we've really got some awesome, highly skilled people there, everybody wants to hang out with us now, so that's been extremely successful. And it's all about partnerships across the board. We're really tied into a network now. Kitten Central and Field Haven are essential for us to hit those numbers with cats in the 90% range for live release. Best Friend Animal Society of Los Angeles, we even helped out a little bit and they reciprocate now. It's really a statewide network, we're moving animals around to find success rates. 148 animals were transferred to rescue groups and our partners, Field Haven, Kitten Central, Leaps and Bounds, Rabbit Rescue, Placer SPCA, of course, Recycled Pets, and Haven Dog Rescue. And we've transferred 85 animals back in as reciprocal to facilities that really needed it at the time, Yolo County Animal Services, Front Street, Bradshaw Sammy's Friends, Field Haven, Best Friends Los Angeles, and Northwest SPCA. So some of our partnerships have really expanded out. We received a National Association of County Award recently for collaboration to repurpose the former shelter with Gold Country Wildlife Rescue. It saved us about 700 hours in time, again. Country Wildlife Rescue. It saved us about 700 hours in time. Again, much more efficient to have them right across the street to help us with wildlife issues, and they have rescued and saved more than 3,000 animals since moving into our former Placer County Animal Shelter. This, again, is tied into even a larger network, and being across the street from them has really fostered joint events and increased our community awareness. So we'd like to present the award to Sally Schuestein with Gold Country Wildlife, since they were the other half of the award. We got it, and felt that we should present it to them. There it is.
I guess it was a couple of years ago I made the mistake of meeting this lady.
He blocked my phone.
I just happened to be at the old shelter, the Gold Country Wildlife Rescue, and someone, I guess you're a real estate guy, walked in, said, "We still haven't been able to find a place." And I said, "I got an idea. Why don't you use the old animal shelter?" And it's worked out great. It's been really a great partnership, right across the street, as Wes said. So we have a lot of collaboration between the two agencies. So it's my great honor to present this from the National Association of Counties, which I am a member. So anyhow...
So it's extra special.
Extra special.
You get to vote.
The National Association of Counties is proud to award Placer County a 2018 Achievement Award for its program titled Gold Country Wildlife Partnership. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And you can actually just lobby if you want to. You've only got two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. I would like to make one correction. He said we've saved 3,000 animals since we moved in. We save almost 3,500 a year, and we've now been in the shelter. It was two years. Not that I'm counting or anything, but...
Those are last year's statistics. Sorry about that.
Yeah. First of all, thank you all for having us here for this. Congratulations, Jennifer, on your big move. And Jim, I cannot thank you enough, because he was Gold Country Wildlife Rescue's champion through this whole process. Seriously tried to block my number, but I wouldn't let him. Facilities got so sick of dealing with me while we tried to write the lease, and Jim always went to bat for me when I had issues. So, but it was, overall, when I look back, it was a great experience. I met a lot of wonderful people in facilities, not just, you know, the people you see in front of the cameras all the time or at the microphones. And some things that have come of this for us is we're almost now the thought of wildlife rescue for Northern California outside of the Bay Area. And we couldn't be doing that and doing what we're doing without this facility. And for just a couple things that I'll bring to mind are the campfire wildlife. We got five animals, two had to be euthanized, but three, a bobcat with fifth-degree burns to the pads of all four paws, and two gray foxes with fourth-degree burns. We would not have been able to care for those animals without having this facility. We had UC Davis veterinarians helping us with fish skin, the tilapia fish skin treatment on those burned animals, which is what saved their lives. And last fall, we got a call from the Department of Wildlife out of the state of Nevada with a botulism outbreak in some of the man-made lakes, and we got 266 sick ducks. We couldn't have done that without this facility. So we're open every day of the year, providing our services for free, and everybody in Northern California knows it. So the other thing that happened is in 2017, we typically up for the several years up to that point, fielded 7,500 phone calls a year. Last year, it was over 12,000 phone calls. So people know about us. We're top of mind, which is great, because we need to get the wildlife out of people's hands, so they don't try to make pets out of them, and so we can save them, rehab them, and get them back in the wild where they belong. So thank you all. Couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
And we have a joint open house. We moved it up to spring. It's May, when is it, May 20?
May 18.
May 18 this year, so hopefully, we'll see you all there. It's a great event. We had over 1,000 people last year attending both facilities. One other, real quick, Dana Miller, a local Realtor, wanted to point out that kind of the model of which she's helped Animal Services over the last year. Unfortunately, she couldn't be there as she really wanted to be, but she's one of our better contributors. Not really so much the amount of money she's contributed to the shelter, but her timing. She's working with us to make sure that whatever she contributes really hits animals that we've had trouble adopting. She works with us during special events when the fees are down a little bit, so she reduces it down to zero to really help move those animals out, and that has resulted in an over 100 adoption since 2017. And we're going to continue to try to build those kinds of partnerships with our community going forward. So that's about all I've got this morning. To answer, any questions you have, such as, are those kittens still available? No, they're not, but we can get some just as cute if you really are interested.
Thank you, Wes.
Sure.
Any board members have any questions, comments? Jennifer?
Yeah, so some of those improved numbers in terms of adoptions and live release, can you talk a little bit about how our move-up at Tahoe played into that?
Oh, those statistics are included in there, and you're right. I did want to note that specifically, that Humane Society, the partnership with the town of Truckee, we regionalized, was that five years ago, I believe? And that's been completely successful, even better than the promises we made. It's really remarkable. I think the live release rate's in the upper 90s there. Our efficiencies are dramatic. Our officers have more time in the field, because they're not caring for the animals because of the partnership with Humane Society taking care of that, and we've saved an incredible amount of money at the same time. Our live release rates went from, or our length of stay, rather, in the old shelter, I think it was four or five months for dogs before in Tahoe Vista, nobody even knew where it was, really, to that brand-new facility right off the 80. I think it's less than 20 days now. So it's really been amazingly successful. And some of those statistics picked up about that same time. You can see that the trend's upward was because of the deal with Tahoe Truckee.
Yeah, and I just, I really wanted to call that out, because often, what we have to do is make some very unpopular decisions in our own district, but we know that they are really for the right reasons.
Right.
And for me, that's truly one of the highlights of the work that I was able to do, was to really serve both our community but our animals at a much higher level. And, you know, those are all the win-wins that we're always working for, and that is just such a shining example of it being done the right way.
It really was. And I thank you for all your support throughout that. It was a little rough here.
It was a little.
And I appreciate you sticking with us. That was awesome.
I was going to get recalled, as I recall.
And Supervisor Holmes?
Thanks, Wes, for this presentation. Can you talk a little bit about the feral cat adoption program?
Absolutely. So Field Haven, one of our partners I mentioned, has worked with us to create a barn cat, or what we call a rodent ranger program. So essentially, all the feral cats that come into us, we, you know, spay and neuter them, vaccinate them, get them all healthy, put a chip in there so we can track and make sure that we know that they were vaccinated and what the dates were in the future. And then, we find them a job, essentially, a barn or a horse property. There's so many of them in Placer County, in this area specifically, that people need mousers, essentially. So we get them jobs, we tell them, you know, feed them a little bit, but not too much, you know, and talk to them a lot, and, you know, make friends with them, but they'll just hang out on your property and work for you. And it's been completely successful. We haven't had to euthanize one feral cat in over two years now that we've started that program. So that's another reason why the cat populations have really increased. And then, a foster network program that we set up with Kitten Central, so all the neonatal kittens that are abandoned, a lot of them don't make it, they, you know, have to be fed around the clock. This foster program has been completely successful, and they raise them by hand until they're about eight weeks old, and then return them to our facility. So they're perfectly adoptable. I mean, they've been raised in somebody's hand. So, you know, you go, you want to see the kitten, it goes "toom," just sticks on their neck, starts purring, and out the door they go. They're flying out of here. It's almost devious how well it works. Those are probably two examples of them right there. So, yeah, there's been very successful with our partner organizations in the last few years.
All right, Supervisor Gore?
Thank you so much for the update. I appreciate it, and I look forward to coming and visiting you as well, so I can see your operations. And if I don't make it on the 18th of May, I'd love to come beforehand.
Okay. We'll set up a special tour for you, absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
All right, we move on to our Public Works timed item at 9:10. This is considering adopting a resolution awarding request for proposals to GHD, Inc. Going to build us some roundabouts up off Bell Road, huh?
So, good morning. My name is Kyle Friedrich. I'm the engineer assigned to the Bell Road Roundabout Project, and I'm here today to ask that you guys approve and adopt a resolution awarding Request for Proposal 100118 and contract number 0099 to GHD for Engineering and Environmental Services for the Bell Road Roundabouts at I-80 project in the amount of $1,990,614 upon County Council Risk Management Concurrent, and authorize the Director of Public Works or Designee to execute future contract amendments up to $199,061 as needed. Funding is provided by Federal Congestion Mitigation Air Quality, Federal Regional Surface Transportation Program, and the County Traffic Impact Fee Program. So we worked hand-to-hand with procurement, and we advertised for environmental and civil services. We received four proposals back, and we interviewed all four. In the end, we selected GHD using a panel made up of Caltrans and county staff, and selected them as the most qualified firm. Once this contract is complete, we intend in the next year to evaluate several different design alternatives, evaluate the environmental impacts, and reassess the traffic impacts that will result from the project. We are pretty confident that roundabouts will be the selected alternative in the end, because back in 2005, we did a preliminary study, and roundabouts were suggested as the balance of dollars spent and efficiency resulting from the project. So we are confident that once we flush all the new information out, updating it from 2005 to now, that we'll get that same result. Our target is somewhere in the next six to nine months, we'll have a design and present it to the public. And so with that, I'd like to open up to any questions that may be out there.
Before we take questions, why don't you just, for those that aren't familiar with the project in general, just kind of describe what the project is that we're embarking on here?
Sure. So right now, the interchange at Bell and 80 experiences some traffic delays during the morning and evening commuter hours on the on-and-off ramps. And so, the target would be, instead of having that traffic extend down into I-80 and onto the main line of the highway, to try to facilitate that traffic through the interchange more efficiently. There are a couple of different ways you could handle that, whether it be through a roundabout or through a signal. For us, a signal offers the best solution to maintain traffic going through, because it doesn't impact the existing structure, so we don't have to widen the bridge or have an elongated impact to the community. We can build it on either side. And it's, like I said, it's a good balance. Widening the structure costs more money. Pushing the roundabouts out and away from that structure reduces the cost and gives us a good balance between the two.
Okay, if you could clarify, because you just said a signal provides the better...
Oh, sorry, sorry. A signal is another alternative.
Right. You said the signal provides the better solution.
Correct, sorry.
You meant the roundabout.
Yes, yes, the round.
You traffic guys always revert to what you know with the signal.
Exactly.
All right. With that clarification, the project, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I just, I'm really delighted to see this moving forward. There were a lot of questions and concerns about how roundabouts would just work in general, and I think between the successes in Truckee and what we've seen up in the Tahoe area, challenges still exist with traffic flow, but they are definitely improved by the roundabouts. And I always tell people that if you don't believe me, or if you don't believe the traffic engineers, Mythbusters did a really good piece on it, and it will just sort of lay the whole thing out for you, and how it's, traffic is better, collisions are at lower speeds, so people and property gets hurt less, fewer air emissions, because traffic is not sitting and idling. Lot of benefits to this. It's going to be tough for people. There's going to be some real concern about the changes. I've heard it from folks, and I understand, change is difficult. But I think moving forward with this contract and really taking a closer look at it is the right step for us to be taking today.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions by board members, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? And seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approval.
We have a motion, Montgomery was the second Wygant, is that what I heard? Or was it Holmes?
Both. We were assigned.
Oh, were you? Okay, all right. In harmony, yeah?
Wygants.
All right. That's wonderful. I'll take your word for it. So we'll give it to Wygant. All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
I oppose. None? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think that concludes the items before the board today, right? Nothing else going on? Okay, we are going to go ahead and switch to our 9:15 timed item. This is the Chabot of Roseville, money use permit variance and administrative approval, and considering the third-party appeal. I'm going to ask County Council to kind of speak to the setup here, given what we experienced with a notification issue earlier, which unfortunately had us delay this hearing to today from when it was previously agendized. And so, if County Council would kind of set the stage for us here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board is aware, this matter was continued off calendar because it was determined there was a noticing issue. Notice for this sort of item is a 300-foot radius around the boundaries of the project site. It was determined, actually the day of the hearing, that that had not been met, so therefore, it was continued to renotice. What was discovered after that was that the same radius, defective radius, had been used for the Planning Commission hearing. Now, normally, when something like this happens, and somebody asserts that they had been aggrieved by the notice, we would take that back to the hearing body. However, in this case, we have an appeal. And with the pending appeal, under our county code, when appeal is filed, it stays the decision of the lower body until the appeal hearing body takes action. We determined in our office that it does not serve the public good to send this back to the Planning Commission to have a hearing with the pending appeal, only to bring it forward to the board to have another hearing. As this board is aware, during, for an appeal hearing, the board takes up the items that have been appealed. In this instance, the project entitlements have all been appealed, and the adequacy of the mitigated negative declaration has appealed. Therefore, the entirety of the project has been appealed. We have determined that the public and this body and the applicant are best served by conducting a de novo, that would be a new hearing, on the merits of the project and the mitigated negative declaration first, then consider the merits of the appeal. In this manner, we provide the public with the opportunity to comment on any portion of the project they wish to, as well as the appeal. We do suggest that you allow staff to provide both the merits of the project and the appeal first, and conduct one public hearing for time efficiency purposes. And with that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of council on how we arrived at the process that we're about to embark upon? Okay, seeing no questions by board members, at this time, we will take council's recommendation that we allow staff to go ahead and present to our board on that information that we need in order to fulfill on the de novo public hearing, as well as consider the third-party appeal. With that, Mr. Schmidt, I believe the floor is yours, or Mr. Ivaldi, did you have any opening comments first?
Nope, we can go right in.
All right. We'll jump straight to Mr. Schmidt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. I'll be providing you an overview of the Chabot at Roseville project. The appeal filed by the Granite Bay Community Association. In the basis of the appeal, particularly setbacks to design parking and traffic impacts. So the project site is in Granite Bay. It's on the southwest corner of Wood Grove Way and Douglas Boulevard. It's 1.3 acres. Zoning, there's two zoning districts on the site, both are residential single-family, with an agricultural combining district, minimum building site of 100,000 square feet, and two PD designations, one of one unit per acre and another at .44 units per acre. Nearby zoning is a mix of residential single-family to the north, residential agriculture to the east, residential single-family, PD development, the Greyhawks subdivision to the south, and commercial development around the Sierra College Douglas Boulevard intersection. If you're familiar with Granite Bay, this is a former South Placer Fire District station that Chabot at Roseville acquired back in 2008. They've performed some renovations to the existing facility, mostly interior, for a worship space and a daycare center. Their proposal is to demolish the existing facility and construct two buildings on the site, a 16,700-square-foot, two-story... A sixteen thousand, seven hundred square foot, two-story community center is the main building on the eastern portion, and a two-story education building of sixty-six hundred square feet. Parking is proposed for forty-eight cars. This is a look at the proposed design. I'll note that the main building on the top, the community center building, it appears to be three stories, that signature element, the third story is false, it's nonusable space, it's just a decorative area. And the bottom structure is the education building in the western portion of the site. Just a look at the floor plans. Ground floors on the left includes the social hall and the religious center, kitchens, offices, and also the daycare facilities. There are two covered play areas here on the corners of the building. These are covered with the second story element. On the top floor is a rooftop play area, adult classrooms and a multipurpose room. The education building has housing or overnight accommodations for twenty-four students in adult supervision apartment and classrooms on the second floor. The requested entitlements for the project were a minor use permit to allow a house of worship and community center with accessory elementary school and preschool uses in the residential, single-family zoning district. The applicant has requested variances to front and side setbacks, twelve foot, six inches along Douglas Boulevard and twenty-one feet along Wood Grove Way, where fifty feet is normally required, and ten feet along the western property line, where thirty feet is normally required in the residential, single-family zone district, and also an administrative approval to allow a thirty-seven foot, four-inch tall building for the community center, that's the main building, where thirty-six feet is normally allowed. This shows a site plan with the existing development around it. To the north is single-family development in the Quail Oaks area, and to the south and to the west is open space, that's the Greyhawk Open Space, so no immediate neighbors to the property. Habitat on-site is really nonexistent, it's the existing building, parking lot and disturbed area, some ornamental landscaping, there is one oak tree, and also a small drainage that is part of the open space area to the south, is along the southern property border. Tree impacts, one oak tree would be removed to instruct the education building, and a turnpocket extension would result in removal of two oaks along Douglas Boulevard. Circulation, today, there's a right-in from Douglas Boulevard that would be blocked. There's also full access intersection at Douglas, Quail Oaks and Wood Grove Way that would be modified, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. This shows the blockage of the right-in access, and full access would be provided to Wood Grove Way, both in and out. At some point in the future, the applicant may decide to reopen Douglas Boulevard as right-in only, they'd be required to extend that turn lane pocket, so we've analyzed that in the environmental document, but that is not proposed as the first phase of their project, so not initially. The Granite Bay MAC considered the item of the project at September fifth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. A bunch of issues were raised by the public, the adequacy of parking, the need for variances, the intensity of use on a small site, safety for daycare uses on the ground floor fronting Douglas Boulevard, traffic impacts, the layout of the site in the project name including Roseville and not Granite Bay or Placer. The MAC did recommend approval of the project, four yes and one no and one member absent. Recommended conditions were for the county to sign, Wood Grove Way has no parking, and the applicant changed the name of the facility to include either Placer or Granite Bay. And I'll just point out that we, I did reach out to the homeowners association for Greyhawk Subdivision, and the message back to me after a board meeting was that parking was not an issue today, they don't anticipate it to be an issue in the future, but they would monitor if the project moves forward, if parking becomes an issue along Wood Grove or near the neighboring streets, and we would deal with that issue then, where the county can look at different options, maybe striping Wood Grove or a portion thereof for no parking or no parking on some of the side streets as well. The planning commission considered the item on November eighth and recommended approval, six yes votes and zero nos and one member absent, very similar issues raised at the MAC. Following that action, an appeal was filed on November sixteenth by the Granite Bay Community Association. The appellant cited the following reasons for the basis of the appeal. They state that no variances can be granted since there are no special circumstances applicable to the property such as size, shape, topography, location and surroundings. The Granite Bay community plan imposes stricter setbacks along Douglas than the zoning ordinance requires, therefore a variance cannot be granted for a setback established in the community plan. The aesthetic impacts of obstructing the public view of the area, including the scenic vista of the open space and degrading the existing visual character site and its surroundings, hasn't been analyzed. The project's proposed design does not comply with the Douglas corridor design guidelines and results in a significant impact on a rural community with specific design criteria. Proposed parking is not adequate. The cumulative traffic impact has not been considered with other currently proposed projects along Douglas Boulevard and elsewhere in Granite Bay. The traffic impact analysis did not consider traffic generated from the various non-school uses proposed for the project, including special events. The traffic impact analysis did not analyze the traffic impacts at the intersection of Douglas Boulevard and Sierra College Boulevard. The noise impacts were not adequately analyzed. The project exceeds the maximum thirty-five percent lock coverage requirements for the project site. The design guidelines recommend that buildings be single-story, and the project does not meet zoning ordinance exceptions that allow up to fifty feet of height, the setbacks are also increased, and finally, that the mitigated negative declaration approved for the project is not adequate. So when variances are requested, we always look at the special circumstances of a site. And there's two special circumstances with this property. First of all, it's a legal non-conforming parcel, so the minimum parcel size is a hundred thousand square feet, whereas this site only has fifty-six thousand square feet, so just a little over half of what would normally be required as this property is zoned today. In addition, it's a corner parcel, it has two front setbacks along both Douglas and Wood Grove Way. So the diagram you see there shows what meaningful setbacks would do to the buildable area of the site, it greatly reduces where development can happen on this property. Just a look at the proposed setbacks. Required is fifty foot from the edge of right-of-way, shown in red is the right-of-way edge. Proposed is twelve foot, six inches. Along Wood Grove, required fifty foot front back as well, proposed is twenty-one feet. And then the side setback is ten feet proposed, where thirty feet is required. So there are setback standards in the community plan, and I'll read that for the north side. It says, "Building setbacks on the edge of right-of-way shall be a minimum of seventy-five feet." The setback requirements for the south side of Douglas Boulevard read as follows. "All parcels currently undeveloped are created after the adoption of the community plan and intended for residential use shall maintain a three-hundred-foot scenic setback noise buffer along the south side of Douglas Boulevard as measured from the edge of the ultimate right-of-way." The Chabad site is currently developed, so staff has interpreted that to mean that three-hundred-foot scenic setback is not allowed. If the site was undeveloped and zoned residential, single-family, there would be very few uses that would be allowed on this parcel with the residential designation. So no single-family, no bed and breakfast, those types of uses. There are some similar suffixes proposed along Douglas Boulevard. I will note that all of these are zoned commercial, but you can see that buildings are fairly close to the road in other zoning districts, so this would not be out of character for Douglas Boulevard. The Little Sunshine's Playhouse, which is east of the site, it has a C-two zone, so neighborhood commercial zoning district with a ten-foot minimum front setback, and you can see the blue line is a setback and the red line is the right-of-way. So very similar to what that Chabad of Roseville is proposing. And this is a close-up of that setback to the road. There are design guidelines in the community plan, this is Appendix One, that includes items that new development should include as far as design to meet the community's expectation for the Douglas Boulevard corridor. I'll point out that the guidelines do say they are preferred. And the goal's not strict craftsman design, but for the construction of or embellishment of buildings so as to incorporate the use of the craftsman elements, and then it lists what those design features should be. So when the applicant applied for this project, they submitted a design exception request to the guidelines. And the basis was that the Brooklyn headquarters of the Shabab Lubavitch movement is a Gothic revival structure, it built in nineteen twenty. And they wanted to emulate this design in their facility. And there are a bunch of these around the world that have used this design for their new construction projects, so they sought to do the same thing locally. And this is what was originally proposed, it has that signature two-story element that looks like three stories, and then Gothic revival features on the wings. The staff worked with the applicant, said, "We really needed to get some craftsman features into your proposal," and to their credit, they've worked with us, they came back with this design, which has the craftsman wings. Staff thought it was a little bit too busy, and the applicant came up with what you see today. So the signature three-story element and craftsman elements on the wings, but in a muted scale so as not to detract from or clash with the brick Gothic revival structure. And on the bottom is the education building that has very muted craftsman elements. That's a close-up of the classroom building. So for building height, the height limit in the RS district is thirty-six feet, they are asking for thirty-seven feet, four inches. An increase of height of not more than five feet or ten percent can be granted through administrative approval, the applicant is asking for three point seven percent. So floor or ground elevation to the top of the roof, thirty-seven feet, the rest of the two-story building is twenty-six feet, eight inches. Comparing that to Little Sunshine's, it built up the street, twenty-six feet, four inches. So the two-story element of the education building is almost the same height as Little Sunshine's Playhouse. In comparing the proposed design to the guidelines, the Chabad proposal nearly meets every single element that's called for in the appendix A of the community plan. Looking at other projects along Douglas Boulevard, there is a mix of architecture. Country House Memory Care is at Barton and Douglas that is constructed. Pond View Park is to the east of Quarry Ponds, that's approved but unbuilt. The Quarry Ridge Project is going through entitlements today, definitely a different look, and also there's Little Sunshine's, the rendering, not the as-built drawing or as-built structure, but also very un-craftman-like. As far as aesthetics of the project site, as I pointed out earlier, it is highly disturbed, very little vegetation. Most people would agree the existing facility is unsightly. You can see the open space area to the rear, there is a view corridor between the two buildings that would allow you to look into or see that open space area in the rear. As far as parking goes, we did look at the proposed uses and what the parking or the zoning ordinance requires for parking for each individual use. If we added those uses up, in total, they would need ninety-nine spaces, they are proposing forty-eight. The zoning ordinance does allow us to look at dual use of parking and the timing of those uses and what the parking demand is. With that, the highest, if the highest generating uses were used concurrently would be the house of worship and the community center room, that would equal seventy-six parking spaces, whereas only forty-eight are proposed. So we've conditioned the project that the multipurpose community rooms cannot be used at the same time as the social hall in the religious facility, so that parking is adequate on-site. This project is consistent with land use in the previous environmental analysis for the community plan and the cumulative traffic analysis prepared. Therefore, the cumulative impact of the proposed project has been considered, has not been restudied for this project and is less than significant. So that's our methodology for analyzing impacts to projects. If it's consistent with zoning, we don't have them do a cumulative study. Based on the traffic, traffic analysis with a hundred and thirty students in the school is proposed, AM peak hour trips would be twenty-three and PM peak hour is twenty-one. Existing traffic on Douglas Boulevard is about forty-five thousand cars per day along the stretch of Douglas. The change to the Douglas-Wood Grove intersection, this intersection has been failing for some time. If this project is constructed, they would need to modify the intersection so that cars northbound on Wood Grove cannot make a left across the eastbound lanes to go westbound on Douglas. They'd have to make a right out of the Greyhawk Subdivision, make a U-turn on Sino to go east, to go westbound on Douglas. Cars coming south out of Quail Oaks would have to make a right and make a U-turn at Sierra College Boulevard. We did look at the turnpocket lanes at those two U-turn intersections, they were adequate to handle the cars that would be diverted. We also looked at other intersections, whether they would be impacted by diverted traffic, and nothing rose to a level of requiring additional mitigation. We did receive a letter from the city of Roseville, they've been commenting on every single Granite Bay project of late, asking that the county fix the Douglas Boulevard-Cair College Boulevard intersection. Specifically, they want six lanes from Sierra College to Cabot Stallman South. This project does not trigger that based on the traffic volume, but they will be paying fees to pay into that project, which is part of our CIP program for Granite Bay. Traffic from events, it's, it's hard to analyze. Events are part of today's modern religious facility. It's the nature of a church or a community center. We don't know when those events are going to be, we do know the timing, can't be at the same time as the religious center is used. So by the infrequency or the unknown timing of the events, it's, we couldn't analyze, and we did not analyze those. But they, we do know they would be out of peak hour periods, so not during daytime commute or evening commute. Other issues, there wasn't environmental noise analysis prepared for the project. We did look at the effect of children playing outdoors on neighboring residences. The existing homes are very far from the facility, and the analysis showed that it wouldn't impact them. There would be an impact from existing traffic on Douglas to the students inside the classroom. There's a condition of approval, calling for stronger windows and other measures to mute that noise from the traffic along Douglas to the classroom space on the community center building. The appellant stated that the maximum thirty-five percent lock coverage allowed in the RS district has been exceeded, that was miscalculated by the appellant. The ground floors total approximately eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet or twenty percent of the project site. You don't measure the total square footage that's proposed, you just measure what the footprint is on the ground, so they are under thirty-five percent. To state that zoning, our zoning ordinance does allow up to fifty feet in height, if setbacks are also increased, the project can't meet those setbacks, therefore they can't ask for the variance to the height. We can get the administrative approval for that five percent deviation from the height maximums. And the appellant also states the MND prepared for the project is inadequate, and staff believes and county council concurs that the MND prepared for the project is the appropriate document and is conformance with the requirements of CEQA. And with that, staff recommends that you deny the third-party appeal filed by the Granite Bay Community Association and uphold the planning commission's November eighth, two thousand and eighteen decision to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program prepared for the Chabad at Roseville project pursuant to CEQA, and uphold the planning commission's November eighth, two thousand and eighteen decision to approve a minor use permit variances and administrative approval for the Chabad at Roseville project, subject to the conditions of approval attached to the staff report. These recommendations are subject to the findings also contained in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, Chris, did you want to go ahead and continue on with the specifics of the appeal, or do you think council that it's more appropriate for us to ask questions at this point, or should we hear the specifics of the appeal first?
I believe that Chris was able to fold in the appeal issues as well as the merits of the project, so the board can ask questions either on the merits of the appeal... So the board can ask questions either on the merits of the appeal. Might help if Chris puts up that list again or the merits of the project itself is proposed.
There are some additional slides that go into what was discussed or what was submitted as an alternative by the community association. You're going the wrong way on the slides, Chris. I'm talking about what's remaining.
Did you want to go over their alternative?
Huh?
Did you want to talk about their alternative?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's worth going through the remaining slides, talking about the alternatives and staff's analysis on the issues raised of air quality and the RS versus the C1. So yeah, you've got a few other slides here that I think it's worthy going through.
So the appellant, to their credit, did submit a revised site plan that would meet at least the 50-foot setbacks along Douglas. The community center building would be shifted to the west and reoriented. And the education building would take its place but meet the setbacks from Douglas Boulevard. And that shows their proposal there. The applicant, HABAD at Roseville, did look at that and measured it up with scale and found that the driveline between the two buildings would not meet fire code. So it's 15 foot, seven inches, not the 26 required by the fire district and our zoning ordinance guidelines.
And on that alternative, while it meets the setback requirement from Douglas as it exists today, the variance would still be required from Wood Grove, correct?
Wood Grove and also the side setback to the west.
Right. So one of the three requested variances is satisfied with this, but the other two would still need to move forward.
Yeah, it pushes the buildings back and then all parking along the front edge.
Okay. And then what does it do to landscaping along the front there?
There would be some landscape in the multipurpose easement directly south of Douglas, but very minimal. Now you hear parking, a row of parked cars all along that northern boundary. So it does reduce it.
As opposed to the current proposal, which has landscaping along?
Directly in front of that signature two-story building.
Okay.
It's fully landscaped.
All right.
There was one, we did receive a bunch of letters, which are all copied on. There was one letter from the Sierra Club Plaza Group pointing out potential air quality impacts of vehicles along Douglas to the students of the facility. And our air quality person in planning points to Air Pushing Control District CEQA handbook saying that freeways and high-traffic roads, just says it avoids citing new sensitive land uses within 500 feet of a freeway, urban road with 100,000 vehicles a day, or rural roads with 50,000 vehicles a day. Douglas doesn't meet those thresholds. The traffic today is 46,380. So there is no impact from the vehicles.
Okay.
And this just shows what's allowed in the RS district normally. Communication facilities, community center, daycare, golf course, house of worship, playgrounds, public safety facilities, schools, and then also what's a neighboring commercial if the property was rezoned. A whole bunch of things that would not be allowed in RS. Driving services, fast food, various stores, medical services, offices, personal services, restaurants, vehicle repair, et cetera. If the property was undeveloped, on the bottom shows what would not be allowed due to the 300-foot scenic setback along Douglas Boulevard. Single-family homes, bed and breakfast, mobile homes, residential care homes.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. If I may begin, I have a couple of questions. Just going to that last slide you were on discussing the residential zone versus the C1 zone district. Going back as far as I remember, it's been a fire station. I moved here in 1970. It was, I don't remember it, but it was a fire station. The establishment of the residential zoning on a fire station that had existed since the 60s and zoning that residential in the 89 community plan, do we know what the genesis of that was? Why that was that existing fire station government use facility was designated residential when there'd never been a residence on there?
I don't know, but I suspect it was rezoned along with the Greyhawk where the Greyhawk subdivision is. So it's consistent with the Greyhawk properties to the south, just as a residential.
Greyhawk was years after the community plan was updated, so.
I'm just anticipating, I'm just thinking that maybe that whole block of land was RS, zoned RS at some point, even though it wasn't a residential use.
Okay. And we have subsequently built a number of fire stations in Granite Bay. They've abandoned this. They sold it off. Those fire stations that have been built in Granite Bay, any of those built within the setbacks for the various roads?
We've looked at that, and they're all not meeting the minimum requirements of the base zone district. So either.
They are all not meeting the minimum requirement?
Correct. They're all closer to the road than would be.
They're all built within the setback?
They are.
Every one of the fire stations that's been built in Granite Bay is built within the setback? And were variances obtained? Do they go through this kind of a process?
The only one that I found the documentation for is for the Olive Ranch Road one, and there was a variance for the front setback for that station. That's the newest one in Granite Bay.
And that's the one that, similar to this site, has two frontages, right?
Correct. Is it a corner?
Yeah.
That facility replaced this facility.
Right. When they moved out of here, they moved in over there. So that's the only one of all the fire stations built in Granite Bay that actually obtained a variance, but all of them are built within the setback?
Correct.
Okay. So in the 89 plan, this parcel gets identified with a residential zoning. And yet, in the 89 plan, we also overlay a 300-foot setback on the south side of Douglas for residential properties.
Correct.
So had this property not had an existing fire station on it, by virtue of the zone designation that was hung on it, it would have been a completely unusable property, right?
Very few uses. You can see those uses on the top of this table. There are very similar parcels to the east that also have RS zone that are undeveloped that are very small, less than an acre. They would be in this, they are today in the same situation.
But those parcels were all, as a result of the 89 plan, were all given a density transfer opportunity. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So every parcel that was, that did, was not deep enough to be buildable outside of the 300-foot setback, every parcel was given the opportunity to transfer density off of that parcel in order to preserve the 300-foot setback.
Correct.
With one exception. Do you recall what that one exception was?
I believe it's this site.
I'm sorry? No, other than this. Other than this, there was one other parcel. It's the parcel that today the Granite Bay Cosmetic Surgery Center sits on. That was left residential and did not have a density transfer opportunity. And so we actually had to amend the Granite Bay community plan to make that a commercial parcel because as it was designated, it was unbuilt, it was zoned residential, and put a 300-foot setback on it, which means it had no use, no value to it. So we actually had to amend in recognition of the fact that the community plan essentially obliterated the use of that piece of property. We amended the community plan to attach the commercial zone designation as it's built today to reflect that, the cosmetic surgery center. So that was the only other parcel that has the same unique characteristics of this where you didn't have the density transfer opportunity. You had an existing use of a fire station, and yet, for whatever reason, we decided to hang, in the 89 plan, hang the residential on this. So going back to the 89 plan, today we are being asked to consider a variance from the setback requirement as it exists today. And the setback requirement as it exists today recognizes a 70-foot right-of-way from center line and then puts the 50-foot setback in addition to that 70 feet from center line. Is that correct?
Yes.
So when the 89 plan was adopted, Douglas Boulevard was two lanes wide. It was not four lanes with a median. When the 89 plan was adopted, the two lanes of Douglas Boulevard are what is today the two westbound lanes of Douglas Boulevard. We don't have a picture because I didn't tell you that I was going to go down this road, but the, there you go. So what we show today is the two. No, that other one, sure, whatever. What we show today is the two westbound lanes of Douglas. Back when the 89 plan was adopted, those were the only two lanes of Douglas. And the southbound lane, or the south side was the eastbound lane, and the north side was the westbound lane. Back when the 89 plan was adopted, we had a 50-foot right-of-way. I have the map right here. We have, this is actually from 91. We had a 50-foot right-of-way requirement from center line of Douglas, which at the time was between the two westbound lanes that we see up there. Then we had the 50-foot requirement on top of that. And the project as proposed today, had this project been proposed in 1990, a year after the community plan was adopted, would have been, I think, we determined about five feet approximately, that they would be encroaching into that 50-foot setback from Douglas as the right-of-way was established and defined with the 1989 plan. That safe to say? That a fair assessment? So almost entirely out of the right-of-way.
That's correct.
So in the 89 plan, for whatever reason, a residential zoning is hung on this property. A 300-foot setback is then put on all residential property. We had a 50-foot right-of-way from center line of Douglas, which was substantially further north than it exists today, where today we have a 70-foot from center line, which is further south. We widened Douglas, acquired right-of-way and widened Douglas by acquiring property only from the south side because the north side was already built. Quail Oaks was built, Sino was built, all the stuff on the north side was built. So 100% of the right-of-way that was needed for the widening of Douglas and the 20-foot median was acquired from properties on the south. So we took what was already a fairly small parcel that the fire station was sitting on, and we made it smaller by coming and grabbing that right-of-way and widening Douglas on down. At the time that we did that, did the county think maybe it would be appropriate for us to look at these setback requirements now that we've taken this much property from these people and really encumbered how those properties can be used? Did the county feel an obligation at that time to say, now that we've done that, maybe we ought to look at the setback requirement, see if this big of a setback is still reasonable given what we've just done in terms of taking this much frontage off of these pieces of property? Do you know if the county initiated any conversation along those lines?
I don't know if that conversation was had, but my hunch would be that the thought was this would always be a fire station. So it was not looked at. And that's why it wasn't given special accommodation in any kind of rezoning.
Okay. And so if the project had been brought in in 1990, a year after the community plan was adopted, it would have been essentially 100 feet from the center line. It would have been 50 feet, approximately 45 feet as it lays out today, approximately 45 feet from the edge of right-of-way as the right-of-way existed at that time. There would not have been a variance requirement on Wood Grove because Wood Grove didn't exist. So had the project been proposed in 1990, just a year after the community plan was adopted, we would have said, we're talking about a five-foot variance here. What do you think? As opposed to what we have today in the as-built environment?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Any of my colleagues have any questions at this point? Seeing none, what we will do is allow the appellant, the, I believe named appellant is Granite Bay Community Association, the appellant to come forward and speak to their issues on the appeal. And take as much time as you need.
Thank you. My name is Diane Will, and I'm a member of the Board of the Granite Bay Community Association. And I just wanted to, I think we covered pretty extensively our issues in our appeal. So I just wanted to cover a couple of things in the staff report. Specifically, I wanted to cover the setbacks. So there's two different setbacks. There's a Granite Bay Community Plan setback, which is the 75-foot setback. You can't get a variance for a community plan setback. That's state law. It requires a general plan amendment. The 50-foot setback is a zoning ordinance setback, and that you can get a variance for. So I just wanted to read further the language in the community plan with respect to the 75-foot setback because the 300-foot setback is not even in play. So it's not an issue. So the staff report acknowledges that variances cannot be granted for setbacks established in the Granite Bay community plan. However, the staff report then goes on to say, "The community plan setback standards are applicable to the north side of Douglas, do not apply to the project site as the only setback requirement solicited for the south side is the 300-foot scenic setback on the undeveloped projects intended for residential uses." The required setback for the north side of Douglas is a minimum of 75 feet from the right-of-way. The required setback for the south side reads as follows. Except as specified in this section, the standards for the south side of Douglas Boulevard shall be the same as the north side. It doesn't say the only south side setback requirement is for the 300 feet. It says, except for the following. So in this case, the north side setback requirement of 75 feet from the right-of-way is the same for the south side of Douglas and the requirement for this project site. So that cannot be achieved with a setback variance. The 50-foot setback and the additional side setbacks, which are the subject to variance request, according to state law, a variance must be limited solely to the physical circumstances of the property and is only for unusual individual circumstances creating an unnecessary hardship. A variance is granted to bring the disadvantaged property up to the level of the uses enjoyed by nearby properties in the same zone district. Financial hardship, self-induced hardship, community benefit, or the worthiness of the project are not considerations in determining whether to grant a variance. I'd also like to note that the constrictions and limitations to development, the setback requirements of this project site are exactly the same as they were when the project was purchased. There are no new or greater development restrictions placed on the project parcel than those that have existed for the entire time this project has been owned by the project applicant. So I appreciate the history lesson of what may have been, you know, prior, but when this project was purchased, it has the same restrictions then that it does now. So the project applicant knew the limitations of the development of the parcel site. If the project was developed in a smaller size, it could satisfy the requirements, the setback requirements, without requesting so many variances. The project is just too large for the building site and the number of concessions requested by the project applicants. The conditional use permit for the project requires 86 conditions of approval, 23 mitigations, plus all the requested variances in order to fit this project to the project site. It's like ordering a cheese pizza and asking for five additional toppings. This project has the same conditions that existed when they purchased it. Now they want variances for a frontage setback, a reduced east side setback, a reduced west side setback, a building height variance, and a reduced parking requirement. It's a cheese pizza with five additional toppings. It's just too much. We'd like to ask the Board of Supervisors to uphold our appeal, deny the project as currently presented. Granite Bay Community Association respectfully requests the opportunity at the close of the public hearing to be able to get back up and address comments raised during the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold one second. EJ or council, who wants to address the issue of the 75-foot setback?
So Ms. Will did read correctly right out of the community plan, but staff's position on the setbacks is it only applies. position on the setbacks is it only applies to undeveloped parcels, not developed parcels.
Counsel, have any thought on that?
Well, based on the factual determination of staff that that particular setback does not apply, that means then you don't need a community plan amendment to apply a narrower setback, and you would then go to the zoning code and look to the variance for the appropriate mechanism to reduce the setback.
Okay. All right. Any board members, any questions on that item? No, seeing none. So I just, I do have a comment, Diane, as I'm sure that you, a lot of this, as you, actually, you might not know, because I don't know if in ninety-two, when I ran for the Board, if you were around and active with the community association back then. But, the, the issues that we're talking about, and you admonished me over the three-hundred-foot setback not applying, I get that. My point really is, as Sandy can attest, because she and I had these conversations back in nineteen ninety-two, I've always been opposed to the three-hundred-foot setback. I think it's an unreasonable restriction on people's property. And I ran for the Board of Supervisors the first time in nineteen ninety-two, and that was a big issue, actually, in the campaign, was that three-hundred-foot setback, because it had just been adopted by our Board just three years earlier, and I beat the incumbent who represented Granite Bay at the time with that as a fairly significant issue. So it's one that is, is, while, might not apply, is certainly, I think, indicative of the fact that there were a number of decisions that were made in the adoption of the eighty-nine plan that people still hold very dear today, thirty years later, when we're talking about land use, and we've made no land use changes to the eighty-nine plan in thirty years. And so, I go through a bit of the history to give the perspective of what was the environment on the ground when that fifty-foot setback was established, and what would it have meant to this project had this project come forward at that time. Speaking of history, the Granite Bay Community Association has a, a rich history of engaging as projects come forward. I recall opposition to the Tree Lake Village project. I recall opposition to the Granite Bay Golf Club. I recall, Sandy, you're shaking your head. Dave Cook would stand here and say, yes, you oppose the Granite Bay Golf Club. Opposition to the Granite Bay Golf Club. I recall opposition to the AMPM that went in on the corner of Sierra College and Douglas. I also recall opposition to the Peridnia Project, which today we know as Greyhawk. The community association opposed that project. So an awful lot of the people that are in this room today wouldn't be in this room because they wouldn't have homes if the community association's consistent opposition to projects brought forward in Granite Bay had been listened to at that time. Now, what I'm curious of, can you give me a project in Granite Bay that you guys have actively supported?
And I would probably have to rely on Sandy for that response, but our opposition to these projects are not solely to oppose the projects. We're trying to work with the developers to design a better project. We were opposed, opposed to the White Hawk projects which are coming up. We felt they required an EIR, and they have gone through the EIR. So I think there's just a lot of projects where we have expressed our opinions, not because we're opposed to the project, but we're opposed to certain design elements, and we feel a better project could be designed to fit the project site. We feel the same way with this project. We have tried to reach out to the project applicant and meet with them. Our alternative plan was not meant to meet engineering standards. I'm not an accountant, I mean, I'm an accountant, not an engineer, so we just tried to say that there's some potential for a better design to fit the project site and still satisfy the Granite Bay requirement, the seventy-five-foot setback requirement. So that's our thoughts on.
And, and in fact, we did, representatives of the community association did meet with representatives of the Chabad in my office. We did meet and have a conversation about the alternative design. We met about the orientation of the building. The, the Chabad has, has agreed to change the orientation to move that three-story frontage off of Douglas, put it on the site of the building so that it's not right on Douglas. So there have been meetings, there have been conversations, there has been some compromise.
And I, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your time, as well as the time of every one of the board members, because each one of the board members has met with the Granite Bay Community Association, and we appreciate that time and, and you're listening to us.
Thank you.
On our concerns.
Okay. And yes, you're, you're more than welcome after the comments to come back up and, and wrap up any final things that are on your appeal. Happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
One last question that I have of staff before we open the public hearing. The assertion has been made that the, the square footage exceeds that which is allowed based on the size of the parcel. Would you differentiate between square footage and footprint when we evaluate those things?
So, we don't do a floor area ratio in our zoning ordinance. It allows a certain number of square feet based on the size of the parcel. We do limit coverage, so coverage would be the building itself, how it rests on the land, what that square footage is, not the amount of square feet. So you could have a twenty-story building having the same footprint as a one-story building. So, the, the appellant just miscalculated.
So when, when you look at the, the footprint of the building as opposed to the square footage of the building, it meets the standard?
It's under thirty-five percent.
Okay.
And we concur.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. We've received a lot of emails that raise that issue, so I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Absent, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gore, you have a question?
I do have a question about the zoning, and I had asked the applicant if this was zoned as commercial versus residential. What would that look like? From what I can tell, the setbacks would be a lot less if it was a commercially zoned property, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, so, commercial, like a general commercial, where I, let's say, neighborhood commercial, which would be more appropriate. Ten-foot front setback would be required.
Okay.
If it was, uh, office professional zoning, that would be a twenty-foot front setback minimum requirement.
If it was like C1, if it had been rezoned to commercial, to?
Ten feet.
Okay. But my understanding is that the applicant chose to not ask for a zoning change, because if they did sell the property at some point, then it would go through a, a different process, and they didn't want to limit the property by changing the zoning. That's my understanding.
That's correct. It would open it up to a number of different allowed uses, which was on a slide that Chris had shown earlier. Uh, yeah, there's a number of uses in a commercial zone that would be allowed that are not allowed in the residential.
Okay.
So if, if I may, on that point, when the property was purchased and, and I first met with the rabbi, and the rabbi, well, prior, actually, prior to the property being purchased, when I met with the rabbi to discuss the possible utilization of this site for the Chabad, and the rabbi was talking about his vision for the Chabad, it build out. First of all, you never showed me a picture of that, that facade, but that's okay, we'll leave that aside. He asked me, he said that, that the, we, we want to serve the community as it exists, plus the growing community. Obviously, you're in the church business, you're there to, to evangelize, and so you hope for a growing congregation. So he said, we want to meet the needs of the community as it exists, and hopefully an expanding community. And he said, on this site, we have these setbacks, he was fully cognizant of the setbacks on the rural part of it. And so he asked me, what, what do you think we should do? Should we rezone it commercial, or should we just request a variance from the setbacks? And my advice to him at the time was, don't rezone it commercial, because if you rezone it commercial, what folks will be focused on, rightly so, is if the Chabad doesn't succeed and goes away, a Walgreens goes in, or anything else goes in, as opposed to the variance which rides with the conditional use permit. So, I advised him, based on their, their vision of, of an ultimate build-out, to not seek the rezone, but rather that, just apply for the variances so as to not disrupt at least that part of what was proposed under the community plan. That consistent with your recollection?
Uh, yep, I remember hearing that.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Any other questions? Nope? Okay. Hearing no other questions by board members, at this time, we're going to open the public, yes? I'm sorry? Oh, fair, yes, good point. I'm sorry, we did hear from the appellant. Let's hear from the applicant. Thank you very much. The applicant?
I'm going to share the.
All right. Step on forward, yep.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Good morning. I'm Terri Munger, a twenty-five-year resident of Granite Bay and a proud Chabad Board Member. We were unable to have our legal representative attend the hearing today. After consultation with my fellow Board members and on behalf of the Jewish community, Senator Chabad, I am pleased to read the following statement before you, followed by remarks from the rabbi. Before I start, I'd like to extend our deep appreciation to the Jewish community for their support of this project and to many Granite Bay neighbors, including our immediate neighbors at Greyhawk, for their graciousness and openness to the Chabad House and the Chabad Project. The uses before you, a house of worship, a community center, a religious education center, already exist on the site. What Chabad congregation seeks is a new permanent home on the site in place of the many decades-old former fire station that has been converted on an interim basis to allow for Jewish worship in Granite Bay. The Chabad sect of Judaism is a worldwide movement that has brought through the tradition and practices of Orthodox Judaism to many in the Jewish community, including the growing Jewish community in Granite Bay and South Placer. Most of the issues raised in the appeal today have already been adequately addressed at the planning commission, as well as in today's staff report, such as traffic, parking, size, height, and design. We would like to address specifically the concerns raised in the appeal regarding the setback variance, which was unanimously approved by the planning commission on November eighth. There seems to be much confusion by lumping several issues together. Perhaps when breaking the issues apart, some of the misconceptions will be resolved. The first concern is the look feel of Douglas Boulevard for drivers and pedestrians. The proposed project won't impact the feel of Douglas Boulevard in any way. As shown in the examples presented by the planner, the proposed project will be a setback from the street in the same way many other similar properties are on Douglas Boulevard. This is true both in regards to commercial as well as residential projects, such as the residential neighborhood directly across our property, which doesn't adhere to a fifty-foot setback. For the ordinary driver pedestrian on Douglas Boulevard, passing by the proposed Chabad property will not feel any different than any other properties passed while driving through the Douglas corridor. The second concern is the lack of adherence to the community plan. The zoning, the zoning ordinance includes a variance process, recognizing that certain properties may be constrained beyond the norm and thus need more specific evaluation to determine the limitations of its appropriate development. Our property is severely constrained with the proximity of the natural open space on the south side and the safety needs of access to Woodgrove Way via Douglas Boulevard. On April twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, Rabbi Korek personally met with the Granite Bay Community Association regarding the use of our property and future plans. They recommended a rezone from residential to commercial use, since the property isn't appropriate for use as a residence, nor has it ever been used as such, and with its proximity to Granite Bay Business Park, a commercial use of this property would flow well. Had a rezone been approved for this project, there'd be no need for a setback variance for this project, as a proposed plan falls well within the setback allowances for commercial properties on Douglas. A denial of the setback variance for this project is essentially denying Chabad from using its site in the same way many of its neighboring properties have used their property, as was previously brought up in the planning commission hearing. Finally, the process we've gone through demonstrates how clearly the Granite Bay community feels about this project. In addition to a significant number of support letters that were sent to the planning commission and support from many of our immediate neighbors at Greyhawk, the four-to-one vote in support to the project by the Granite Bay MAC and unanimously approved by the planning commission reflects the support of the Granite Bay community for this project. In closing, we'd like to point out, Chabad has served the Jewish community for over nine years as the only Jewish place of worship. If the Granite Bay Community Association would add the Chabad House to their listing of places to worship in Granite Bay, found on their website, along with ten other churches of various denominations they currently have listed, it would go a long way to show their sincere support of a Jewish place of worship in Granite Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to address, the Board of Supervisors. We respectfully request the Board to deny the appeal and uphold unanimous approval of the planning commission. Also, we ask for the opportunity to return to the dais to address any public comments on the project.
My name is Rabbi Korek. I'm the rabbi with the Chabad. During this entire process, I've taken a backstage, and I haven't spoken during any of the hearings, and now, since there have been some challenges set as to whom in the community does Chabad serve and benefit, I'd like to share a few words about the work and impact of Chabad in our community. In addition to the members of the Jewish community in South Placer that have a place to worship, learn, and fellowship, for the hundreds of local middle and high school students, including those from Cavett and Granite Bay High, Chabad provides annually a free education opportunity on the history of the Holocaust and the implications of hatred by a live lecture from a Holocaust survivor. As a matter of fact, the twenty-nineteen event is scheduled later in this month, on March twenty-eighth, God willing. For men and women of all religious backgrounds who are searching for spiritual meaning and for some reason feel that Judaism may have some direction for them, Chabad answers their calls and emails with no strings attached. For unfortunate homeless people or others struggling with financial difficulties who call for help, Chabad answers their call without any consideration of what religious affiliation they may be part of. Recently, a man called saying he was out of his home, living in an RV, and had no money to pay to park the RV. He is a painter, and was expecting to get some work in the next few days. Of course, Chabad verified his claim with the RV park that he had been in the past, and then gladly paid his fees for the next few days. I don't think he was Jewish. For our Greyhawk neighbors who regularly walk and drive through our property for their convenience, and whom we have gladly accommodated to park in our lot when street de-surfacing was taking place, Chabad has been a neighbor with whom we've enjoyed nine years of friendly and courteous interactions. I am deeply saddened and heartbroken to become witness to a vicious effort by several groups and individuals to bring division and animosity between otherwise loving neighbors. It's almost one year that two development signs have been prominently posted on our property with flyer boxes and contact information for the planner to inform all our neighbors about the project. In April of twenty-eighteen, I met with the Board of the Greyhawk Homeowners Association to discuss our project. They were unanimously in support of the project idea, and frankly, were excited about it. They felt the project will serve a much-needed improvement to the current site. For the last nine years, there have been practically no complaints from our Greyhawk neighbors about our operation, which is reflective of the pleasant experience we've both enjoyed with each other as neighbors. Yet, in the last several weeks, many of our loving neighbors have been calling complaints and signing documents against our current operation and the future project. I personally reached out to several of these neighbors who shared with me that they hadn't even seen the plans, which they signed against, and were informed of many untruths about the project regarding parking, the Douglas-Woodgrove intersection, the setback requests, the floor plan and use of the facility, all of which obviously play a major role in swaying an otherwise happy neighbor against the project. When I clarified the many misconceptions they had, they were surprised to have been told otherwise, and under the factual conditions, they really had no concerns with the project. The democratic process of free expression is a blessing to our nation. However, when people begin to spread false information with a hope of gaining support for their views and claims, that is a sad reality and certainly not the spirit of the liberty and democracy our nation is blessed with. To all our neighbors, I'd like to make this message clear. All of us at Chabad look forward to continuing our nine years of friendly and courteous, courteous interactions. We are committed to have dialogue with you and be respectful of your streets and neighborhood as we have been till now. Please, do not allow third-party groups put loving neighbors against each other. Should you ever have any issue with us, we stand ready to hear from you and work together to resolve the problem. to resolve the matter. To all of the Granite Bay residents, we want to assure you that we respect the quality of life in wonderful Granite Bay and are committed to contribute our share in enhancing it for all. To those who are intentionally spreading false information to others about us and our project, we will not be intimidated by your tactics and will continue to spread light and do our great work for the community. To this honorable Board of Supervisors, we hope you can see all of this objectively and support the recommendation of the MAC and unanimous approval of the planning commission for this wonderful project and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Any board members have any question of the applicants? I see no questions of the applicants. Having heard from the applicants and the appellants at this time, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you're interested in commenting, please go ahead and feel free to line up. You don't have to wait for somebody to clear. And as you step forward, please identify yourself and understand that we're going to ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes, okay? Thank you very much.
Do the best I can. Good morning. My name is Marsha Birch, and I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of the Granite Bay Preservation Society. And we did submit a letter commenting on the appeal. We concur with the items that have been raised in the appeal, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of things because I'm going to keep it to three minutes. You know, SEQA is a procedural statute, and the reason that you're required to go through the environmental review process is in order to provide a basis for an excellent decision, a sound decision. And in this particular case, because the project is such a deviation from the community plan and the zoning requirements, it is my view that a full EIR is required. And that's not to make the project more difficult, it's to provide an opportunity for the public and the decision-makers to really understand what the project impacts are going to be and to be able to look at alternatives. We've seen some, we've seen some things here today that provide, in my view, a very clear understanding of why a full EIR is important in this case. There may be ways of configuring this project that could reduce the impacts and could make it more consistent with the community plan and the zoning requirements, but we won't know that because with mitigated negative declaration, you truncate the environmental review, there is no analysis of alternatives. So I would encourage, I would encourage the Board to consider sending this back for a full EIR, not, again, not to make the project more difficult, but to do a better job of the decision-making process. The judicial standard for a negative declaration is the fair argument standard, which, as you know, is a pretty low threshold. If there's any evidence in the record that it may have a significant impact, an EIR is required. And that's really all I'm going to say about SEQA. There's a lot in the appeal document. In my view, there's a fair bit of substantial evidence in the record. With respect to the variance, I think the difficulty here is the fact that under, under some of the standards that the county has in place, a variance isn't even allowed. And then, under the zoning ordinance, you can apply for a variance, and then there are five findings that the Board needs to make in order to move forward with approving that variance. Variances are also very strictly scrutinized by the courts, and it's because a variance is an exception. It is not, it is not the rule, it is the exception to the rule. And I've gone through the staff reports, I've looked through the record. In the staff report for the hearing today, there were two of those findings that were discussed, and essentially, the facts that were used as a basis for you to make the finding is that the application exceeds the standards. And I think if you follow that to its logical conclusion, if that is the standard for granting a variance, then anytime you have an application for a project that requires a variance, that fact alone allows, provides support for the variance. And that is not the standard. And I really encourage just some more work on this project. It's not a question of whether or not it's a, it's a good project. It is. I'm sure that there are lots of benefits to this and lots of reasons why the community would like to go forward with it. However, more work needs to be done, more SEQA review needs to be done, and also more development of the facts, if possible, in order to support the findings that you, as the Board, need to make today in order to grant those variances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Rich Pike. I live in Greyhawk, and I will keep my comments very short because I'm really late for work. You know, when I first heard about the Shabbat house going up or doing a redevelopment of the plan, I think, like a lot of people, I thought that was great. I mean, let's face it, the old Placer County Firehouse is a bit of an eyesore. Who doesn't want a beautiful religious facility, you know, parked on the corner of the residential neighborhood? You know, it's when you look at really, it's an issue of zoning, it has nothing to do with anything other than the fact that, like, good fences make good neighbors, applying zoning laws make good neighbors. Everybody's following the rules as they're required to follow them. And they exist in part to make sure of the safety of the community, to make sure that everybody is getting the bargain for exchange that they made when they bought their property. Just very briefly, you know, my concern with this is it's a 23,000-square-foot regional activity center with 24-hour operations that is completely incompatible with a residential neighborhood. I have four kids, they're small, they run around. I would not suggest that any member of the Shabbat house, Habad house, would be racing through our neighborhood like everybody else, by the way. But, you know, you know, from my personal standpoint, it's, redevelop the site, please, but please do it at least with some semblance or just at least within shouting distance of the rules. You know, keep it a decent size, keep it setback enough. A 37, you know, 37-foot-high building offset 12 feet from the corner is really excessive. I mean, so, you know, what I'm asking, you know, of the Board, is to just go to the planning commission and say, just make it sensible. We're not saying you have to go back to 2009, when the planning commission made it very clear that a development above 7,500 square feet was unacceptable. But, you know, just work with the community. Do something reasonable. Be a good neighbor is what I'm asking, and I'm asking for the Board to help neighbors be good neighbors. Thank you. I got to go to work.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, still morning.
Congratulations formally, Bonnie. My name is Tom Doro. I'm a resident of Greyhawk as well, and although there are a few concerns regarding this project, I'm here to talk about just the traffic and parking lot issues. First, the Community Development Resource Agency Planning Letter dated November 8th, 2018, states that the Douglas Boulevard-Quail Oaks-Wood Grove Way intersection currently operates at a level of service value of F. Specifically in that report, the northbound left plus the through plus the right turn is at a level of service of F for both AM and PM. The mitigation plan that's in the document on your website, to eliminate the left, the northbound left turn, drops the level of service to a value of C, but it's not clear how this was determined, since the traffic study doesn't break down the data. It's hard to believe that the average vehicle delay would drop by a factor of 10 by just eliminating that left turn interaction. Second, due to the height of the proposed community center, eastbound Douglas traffic will not be able to see any traffic backed up on southbound Wood Grove due to the cars exiting Habad until they are making the turn. This could easily lead to an accident. Third, when the parking lot gets full, any vehicles entering from Wood Grove will have a difficult time turning around to exit, especially if there are other vehicles doing the same thing. Eliminating the Douglas entrance or exit severely compounds the parking logistics. If Wood Grove was the entrance and Douglas was the exit, for example, to Habad, it would not only help the Habad parents with parking logistics, but improve the Greyhawk traffic as well. I do not agree with the variances, and I'm asking that you please deny the Habad proposal. And just a follow-up to what Christopher said, he indicated that the Board saw no problem with parking, but I believe that a lot of the residents would disagree with that if you asked them individually. And also, one question on the alternate plan that was presented, where the fire department had an issue with the 15-foot space. If you made Wood Grove the entrance and Douglas the exit, and you asked the fire department that question, would they still have a problem with that? Because I think when Greyhawk II went in, the fire department had to have a variance because of the tight radius of some of the streets in there. So I think the fire department's willing to work with everyone to kind of solve all those kind of problems. And so, just, I haven't met you, but...
Just, sir, if you would, please just address your comments to the Board, but we'll know that you're speaking to the rabbi.
I haven't met the rabbi, but I, I am welcoming them to neighborhood. I certainly look forward to replacing that fire station that's there with something that's ideally a little smaller and can fit all of our concerns. So, thank you for your time.
And for your information and those who are going to speak after you, I'm, I'm keeping a list of the specific items that are being raised, four questions to staff. When we're all done with the public hearing, I'll ask staff, on your, your question about level of service going from F to C, how's that achieved? Line of sight, fire clearance, I'm keeping a list of these things, and we will get to that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Others that want to speak to the Board on this item. Is there anybody else after this young lady speaks? Well, feel free to go ahead and either line up or have a seat up here nice and close so that we...
Hi, I, I actually did speak at the planning commission. My concerns are largely, I counted 12 variances, and that had to do with setbacks, traffic, parking, design guidelines, the scale of the project. I agree with what the lawyer said, which is, just because we say that we have to have this project doesn't necessarily mean we're meeting any standards. I think that one of the things that we haven't talked about, well, two of the things, one is code enforcement. All of the proposed use permit, there's, there's nothing to put any restrictions on that, and we've heard from Marcus Laduka that said, oh, you can't do that. Actually, you can, and in other communities, there have been a lot of restrictions put on the number of events, the time of events, the number of people. So, right now, it's a free-for-all, and I think that there needs to be some level of guidance with respect to the community. It's also placing code enforcement on the residents. So, saying that you're not going to use different parts of the building and saying that you're not going to park on the street, I think is unreasonable. I think it puts that code enforcement on the neighbors. Who in the neighborhood wants to call the sheriff on a religious event? I, I don't think that that's a reasonable assumption to make. So I think there needs to be something in the actual monitoring mitigation, however, however that's handled, that there needs to be some type of code enforcement. And in terms of parking, I just cannot believe that when you look at the variance for parking on a smaller project by planning, they actually said it adversely affect public health and safety and is materially detrimental to the public welfare. We have a project that's much bigger now. We had a lead planner back then. What has changed? The planning leadership has changed. So my concern is that it was not safe back when it was a smaller project with less requirements and less parking being requested. Now we have half the parking with a project that's three times the size, and we're saying that all of a sudden it's magically safe. I, I think there's some real concerns about public health and safety that should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Seifert, and I'm from Greyhawk, and I just wanted to say that I, too, like the previous speaker, when I saw the sign there was going to be a house of worship and a school, I was enthused about it. I thought, oh, that's great to have that here. But we never had any idea, or I never had any idea, of the size of the variances, of all the rules, if I would may, that are broken to have it there. I'm in favor of it. I'd like the Board to see that it is addressed in a, in a different form, and I'd like to give the remainder of my time to Richard Bringle. There he is. Thank you.
Yes, three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Richard Bringle. I live at 4390 Rolling Oaks Drive. We are in the Quail Oaks development. My neighbors and I, there's four houses. I truly feel we have the most at stake because I went out this morning, looked at the backyard in my backyard. I'm directly across Douglas. They currently have an illegal trailer that's not permitted on the property they're using as class space. I can see the bottom of the windows just standing from my backyard, which is approximately five feet off the ground on the trailer. So they're going to build a 37.4-foot project, so I'm going to get to look at 32.4 feet of Brooklyn for the rest of my homeownership. So, like I said, the four residences on my street, I think, have the most to say about this because we're going to be so greatly impacted. I take a little offense to what the rabbi said. He's never come to any of my neighbors, he's never come to our homeowners association. Apparently, it's all been about Greyhawk and their approval, but, like I said, I think we have some of the most to say about it. I am one of the people within the 300 feet that weren't properly notified. I, I'm appalled that County of Placer doesn't have a 300-foot tape measure, that they can't figure out where that is. I want to tell you a little bit briefly about myself. I am one of the primary organizers of the Granite Bay Preservation Society. As you know, we had our legal representative, Marsha Birch, come and speak to you, and we appreciate that. I, myself, lived in Folsom for 24 years. I've been here now in three years in Granite Bay. I spent 12-plus years on the planning commission. I was a longtime planning commission chairman and served on many other commissions. I got to tell you, I, I'm disappointed in Placer's planning department because I've never, in all my years in Folsom, seen a project get so many variances and so many, I mean, they didn't follow SEQA, they didn't notify everyone. I mean, this is unfortunately kind of been a cluster in a lot of ways. I like the project, I have nothing against the project. It looks like it's a cool project. And my advice to them, if I was a planning commissioner, would be, you need to find a five-acre parcel to build this, so you have plenty of room, because that's truly what they need. I think unfortunately, we're putting a square peg into a round hole, because it's not enough site there to make it all work with parking. It's grossly underparked, and I can tell you from my experience, you don't want to underpark a project like this because it spills, parking, as I explained to my neighbors, is like water. It spills out and goes to the path of least resistance. Right now, Greyhawk is attempting to pass a no-parking, street parking ordinance. If they do, it's going to put all the excess parking they have over into our development, which is unfortunate, because then people will be risking their lives to try and cross Douglas, which I don't think is very safe for anyone. So, in conclusion, I ask you to please send this project back and approve the appeal. I think that it needs to go back to planning so we can work as a community to try and come to some agreement where everybody can be in appeasement of the project itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I, my name is Aman Deepbajwa. I live in the Greyhawk community. I, too, am a house, which is within the 300 feet of the Habad house. So I moved to Granite Bay in 2017, wanting to bring my children up in a somewhat rural setting in California, moving from the Bay Area. This is what we wanted to do for our children. So we had no problem with the area that we moved to, which included the Habad house, of course. Not being properly notified of this huge project, which we don't have anything against, but just the size of it, and my backyard looking onto it, and probably losing my personal space, has been a concern to me. I have two very small children who do play outdoors, and we are not very far from Wood Grove. That brings a safety concern to me. And being a good neighbor, we are good neighbors, and I would have thought that that would have been reciprocated to me living so close to the Habad house that someone would have come to me and asked me and my husband for my opinion, our opinion on this development. We are part of the HOA. We did not hear anything from our HOA regarding this, and this was very hurtful, being a new resident to Granite Bay. My last question is, if this is such a recreational project, number two, why isn't it called Habad of Granite Bay? Why is it Habad of Roseville? So, those are my concerns, mainly safety, but concern about my property value, my personal space, and just not being treated as a good neighbor. personal space, and just not being treated as a good neighbor and being notified of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jim Ostrich. I'm a resident of Greyhawk. I want to address the issue of being a good neighbor. The Habad House has been very careless, I'd say sloppy, in handling their garbage and refuse. Currently, they use two residential cans for their trash, and they place them up on the driveway off of Douglas, and they're usually packed full with the lids partially open. And when you get some wind, some of that paper and stuff's blowing into the protected wildlife preserve that borders the property. And there's accumulation of that along the waterway in the back of the property there. And they have a corral for a dumpster, which is previously used. And rather than have their garbage offloaded on, where the truck has to stop on Douglas to pick it up and block the exit lane, they use a container, have it picked up, and exit it out onto Wood Grove Way. So I don't know who would see that they would take care of the property properly. They've had a tree that was broken, it finally fell down, and they did cut it up. But the property management leads a lot to be desired. The other thing is the traffic. You've got 192 residents in Greyhawk, and if they egress and ingress off of Douglas, that's two traffic uses. And so if they did that once a day, you'd have 184 vehicles going through there. You also have vehicles exiting onto Wood Grove and going on down to Greyhawk Way and parking and waiting for students to come out of Granite Bay High School. And at rush hour, we have traffic that's coming through Wood Grove Way, going down to Greyhawk, and going out on Eureka to avoid the congestion on Sierra College. And so, it's very dangerous because at that intersection of Wood Grove and Douglas, the speed limit's 50 miles an hour. So these cars are coming pretty fast. And it's difficult sometimes to see the westbound traffic. And so it's a tough turn to make that left turn. So putting them directing that traffic down to the right and making it U-turn, I don't know if that's going to solve the problem, but I think what you need is two things. You need a traffic study to determine the best way to mitigate the risk of serious injury or fatality at the Wood Grove Way intersection. And you need an environmental impact statement to talk about the management of what's going to happen with the wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak after this lady? Oh, yeah, go ahead. We have a couple of open seats right up here in the front. If folks want to fill in right in there, that'd be... There you go. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Fei Chang, and I am a resident of Greyhawk. And I agree with all of the people that have spoken already against the Habad and the things that are happening there. I'd like to discuss the concerns about the safety and the Habad school. Douglas Boulevard is 55 miles an hour, and it would be virtually impossible for a car to stop if a child goes out. From what I heard, they are going to have an elementary school there also, which most elementary schools do have a 25-mile zone right around the school. This is 55. That is a concern. They're going to have about 100, they were saying 130 children going to the school. There's going to be drop-off and pickup. This is a potential for kids getting hurt on Douglas and Wood Grove if the kids are being dropped off around there, if there's not enough parking for them to be dropped The plans also show that the Douglas entrance is going to be cut off. I know someone else has talked about that. This means that the vehicles in the parking lot are only going to be going out of Wood Grove. Like Jim was saying, as we're going on Douglas, we're going 55. When you turn right onto Wood Grove, you're going pretty fast. And I can only imagine the accidents that can happen as they are pulling out of their parking lot and we are churning. We could, oh, sorry, we could actually possibly T-bone them. The other thing that I was thinking about was if they were churning on Douglas and onto Wood Grove, and they have to slow down substantially to go into their parking lot, if somebody was following them, there's a potential for another accident. There's, they do not have the opening at Douglas where they can come through, have a thorough, like they do right now. That would have been a lot better. From what I understand, the playground for the children and the outside activities is going to be on the top floor of the second, the top of the second floor, which is going to be open air. This is difficult to believe that there will not be noise issues with this. It will only increase the noise and the noise level and to the surrounding residents there. You know, will there be any guarantee that the noise will be controlled and only occur during reasonable hours? We don't know this. They are going to be having housing... Sorry, that just kind of disturbed me. They're going to be housing there, which is a red flag for, we don't know when their activities are going to be or how long they're going to be. I just wanted to request for an EIR be done, like all the other people were asking. You know, the other thing is that the parking on Wood Grove, I believe, is only, that's going to be the overflow. And I know that they've gotten a letter from the board that's stating that it's not a problem. I would say majority of the residents did not even know about that letter, and we do not agree with that letter.
Thank you.
So, and...
You try to wrap up your comments.
Okay, okay. That's pretty much what I was going to say. But anyways, I just also wanted to say that I do not agree with the variances, and I am asking that you deny the Habad proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My comments are brief. I just want to kind of piggyback on the environmental piece. I know there's been a lot of discussion about physically what it can look like and what it will look like. And so I'm concerned about trees. Currently, the entrance to Greyhawk on Wood Grove Way is framed by a stone wall with four to five trees on the outside of the wall. It kind of complements the landscape medium. So this provides both an attractive and welcoming entrance to our community. So I want to make sure that those trees do remain, and I didn't see anything contrary to that in the design, but I'm just here to echo that. And since the proposed community center is approximately 10 feet from those existing trees, I'm concerned that the trenching required to accommodate the footing of the community center could destroy some of that root structure. So I just wanted to make sure that it did not result in the killing of any of the trees. So, that being said, I just wanted to reiterate that, along with most of our neighbors, I'm not opposed to having Habad come, and I actually welcome it, being a retired educator myself. But we hope that the board can take into consideration some of our requests for modifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chandra Cortum, and we became residents in the Greyhawk community in 2017. At the time, I have twin boys, they were three, and we have been enjoying our community. And I'm not sure if you're familiar, but we have a community park that is for our residents, and it is right along Wood Grove Way. I would implore the board to request a traffic study because if you block off Douglas, and is already fairly bad with people that come through and use our community as a cut-through to Eureka Way and getting over to the Granite Bay High School and other schools that are more in the back off of East Roseville Parkway, et cetera, for the Oak Hills and Riverview School. Most people don't stop at the stop signs. And there is a crosswalk there that I have had to grab my children to make sure they didn't get run over because people are driving along and they're not stopping, no matter that my children are standing there trying to cross the street. It will only get worse if we have the road blocked off at Douglas so that people will, especially with the Habad House, which I completely welcome. I definitely would love to have a more aesthetically pleasing building to look at than what's currently there. But if, I would implore for the traffic study because if the proposal, as I'm seeing it today, is to come out through Wood Grove Way, a lot of people will turn right and avoid having to go onto Douglas Boulevard at all, and they will cut straight through our community. And that is a very big safety concern for myself and my children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nell Pike, and I am a resident of Greyhawk. My next-door neighbor, Mrs. Cortum, actually stole my thunder. A lot of what I was planning to say, she covered. My big concern is the traffic. Something that I think that hasn't been covered is, you know, if you're at the Habad House and you want to kind of leave and be going west, one option is to go on Douglas U-turn at Sino. The other option is to drive all the way through Greyhawk exit Eureka. And I think a lot, I think that's going to really increase traffic. I think a lot of people are going to choose that option to leave the facility, and I think that's going to really increase traffic. I'm a mother of four young children, and I'm concerned for the safety. You know, when we're walking our dog, when we're riding our bikes, when we're trying to go to the park. And I support Granite Bay Community Association's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Hi, Gary Dahlbeck. I too was encouraged at first when I saw that they were going to be putting a new building and hopefully get it all nicely landscaped, but I do feel this project is too big for the lot size and violates many of the goals of the Granite Bay Community Plan. The height of the main building, when including the facade, over 37 feet, along with the current placement of that building so close to Douglas Boulevard, will be overwhelming and an eyesore as people enter Granite Bay. The look of the building to replicate a building in Brooklyn is also against the guidelines of the community plan, and why would anyone want Granite Bay to have any resemblance to Brooklyn? Many people spend a lot of their precious time when updating the community plan because they love their community and want to keep it a beautiful and desirable place to live. Why is all the effort the community put into the new plan being disregarded? What was the point of updating the community plan if its guidelines are routinely ignored? The applicant should have purchased a larger lot if they wanted the size of the proposed buildings, and they have no one to blame but themselves for the community's negative reaction to their proposal. The proposal should only be approved if the building size is reduced, the main building is relocated to the back southwest corner of the property, the elevation of the buildings are improved, and the community is assured that the new facilities will not be a burden on their residential neighbors. That would mean rare if any parking allowed on Wood Grove Way and no late-night functions or noise. Please support and defend the Granite Bay Community Plan. Please represent the residents of Granite Bay who overwhelmingly oppose this project. Please vote no on this project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Nagri, and I am one of the people on the board of the Granite Bay Community Association. And I'd just like to correct one statement that was made. When the rabbi came to us first and before they even had any plan at all, what we recommended was, whatever he did, that he follow the Granite Bay Community Plan and the County General Plan. We suggested that perhaps he could look into, you know, rezoning commercial. But our main point to him was follow the guidelines, actually laws, that are in place now. And I'm very disappointed with some of the things I've heard because we have worked with him, we've been in several meetings with him, we've given him... The last one where we tried to settle this appeal, we suggested, you know, try, where's an alternative? Give us an alternative. Or go to planning and see what they can do. And there was no movement. So I feel we've been trying to work with their community. We're very happy to have the Jewish community in Granite Bay. And I am part Jewish, so it's fine with me, but it's the zoning, and it's the variances, and it's putting a project that doesn't belong on that lot. So I would ask that you uphold our appeal and deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. All right, anybody else want to address the board that has not spoken? No, we have a couple folks. All right. And other... Okay, go ahead.
I have a fear of public speaking, so I'll do my best.
You're just talking to me. Don't, nobody else is here.
I feel...
Shush. Okay, you're talking to Supervisor Montgomery. You can address her.
My name is Janet Source. I live in Granite Bay since the fall of 2010. In the event I run out of time, I'd like to say that I'm in full support of this project moving forward in the full capacity of the Planning Commission approved on November 8th of last year. What I've read and heard about this project leading up to the Planning Commission meeting in November through today can be described as intolerance bordering on hate. It is very disappointing to me. I expect more from the people in the community in which I live. What do we say to the Jewish community in the wake of what they are facing in recent times? What we need to do is assure them that they are safe. Since the last public hearing regarding this project, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Now we have elected officials making anti-Semitic remarks, which were so offensive, the House passed a resolution condemning anti-Semitism and bigotry in response to her comments. On February 12th, just a month ago today, the Habad House in Brooklyn, which this project is modeled after, was vandalized again while their members were inside in an anti-Semitic attack. We as citizens of Granite Bay, of Placer County, of California, and every other state in this great country in which we live, need to be resolute in our efforts to defeat hate, bigotry, and anti-Semitism. Let us not forget, which is hostility or prejudice against Jews. I am not Jewish, but even I came under attack at the last public hearing when it was over in the following, and in following posts online because I voiced my support for this project, but more importantly, because I spoke out then, as I am today, against the bigotry and hate which I've read online regarding this project prior to the last hearing and what I've heard during the hearing on November. The proposed Habad House isn't just a building. It has significant meaning in the Jewish community. To attack it, such as referring to it as Frankenstein, is the same as attacking the Jewish people, their beliefs and their faiths. They are taught to look past the outward person and trust in the soul deep inside. The belief, their belief is when there is love and oneness around us, peace and harmony enter the entire world. The mandate of Habad is to create light for the sake of light, just by doing good for the sake of doing good, until all the world is filled with a serene light of godly wisdom as the waters cover the ocean floor. This Habad House will do just that and more. It will be a center to facilitate the above. Some of the things the Habad House does are host classes, lectures, and workshops, some of which I have attended. Religious services, Shabbat meals, and special events as needed in the community relating to social and humanitarian issues. The Habad House has worked closely with the county and have made the changes that have been requested. Allowing this project to move forward has far more benefits to the Granite Bay community and its surrounding areas than any speculated negative impact which may have been voiced. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. You did very well.
I like.
You did very well.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Osterich. I also don't like speaking in person. I was delighted to see that they were gonna make some improvements, finally, in the Shabbat House, but it's simply just too big. It's about a building, and the building is just too big to accommodate what they want to accommodate. And I think that's real simple to see that. That's all I have to say. I'm opposed to what the current building is like. It's just too big.
Thank you. You did well as well.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? After this, young lady can have a show of hands. Anybody else want to address the board? Ma'am, you already spoke. I'm sorry, we got, I'm sorry. Unless you're speaking on behalf of an organization, we limit the time to three minutes per speaker, okay? So, yeah.
I'm Gia Lanza, and I'd like to convey my time to.
Okay. She had her three minutes, ma'am. Is there anything that you, are you unable to address the board for some reason? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm not. I was gonna, I was gonna let her do it for me.
Are you unable to address the board with your concerns?
Right now, I am.
Okay. All right. So you're her comfort animal. Come on forward, and you can.
I just, I just.
Just hang out up here with her. How's that? You guys can stand there together. Okay. And I'm sorry, your name again for the record, ma'am?
Gia.
I'm sorry?
Gia Lanza.
Okay. Thank you, Gia.
She's a resident.
I'm from Greyhawk.
From Greyhawk. And your name again for the record as well.
My name's Fei Chang.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Greyhawk, too. The other thing, the thing that she wanted to say was, there was a form, all of you guys have gotten a copy, that had signatures regarding all of the Greyhawk people who have concerns, and majority, I would say almost all, have signed that. And she wanted to just let you know that that is there, and also the pictures that are also a concern. If you can please look at that.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. You did very well.
Thank you.
Well played. All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am? After this, young ladies, or anyone else?
Young, thank you.
All right. Well, we're gonna go ahead and call it after you, so it's all yours.
Hi. My name is Shelley Breton. I'm a resident of Greyhawk. I have to admit, I was not going to speak today, but that last speech did bother me a little bit. And it, the neighborhood, I just want to stress, we are not opposed to improving the Habad House. All of us want it improved. We appreciate what the community is doing. We were just very upset with the variances and latitude that seems to have been given for that amount of space. We'd love to see something better go in, something prettier, something more useful to the community, but on a slightly smaller scale, one that fits that land space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, seeing as no one else wanted to step forward to this point, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And having closed the public hearing, I'm gonna ask the applicant, or the appellant, if there was anything that was brought up that you need, that you feel you need to address.
So I just want to briefly address the religious issues. Our, the Granite Bay Community Association has no concerns with the continued use of the project site by the Habad of Roseville. This is not a religious issue. It's strictly a land use issue, and that's what we've been hearing from the community today, so I just wanted to emphasize that. I also have a letter from our attorney that I would like to submit today, and just reading just one part of that, is the imposition of the Granite Bay Community Plan setback requirements on this project. Do not deny the applicant's ability to accommodate the proposed uses on the site, and as further supported by court opinion, there is no evidence that the project would be unsuccessful in its application if it scaled back its project. So it can continue to operate as it currently has with just a slightly smaller project design.
Okay. And did you want to submit that to the court of the board, that letter to the court?
Yes, please.
Okay. And for the record, again, you are?
Diane Will, Granite Bay Community Association.
Thank you. Back up. I don't think you re-identified yourself. Thank you. Now, Dan, I have a question.
Yes.
Is it true you guys recommended that they rezone commercial?
You know, we didn't recommend they rezone commercial. Their concern was with getting financing, and rezoning to commercial would have allowed them to obtain the financing that they were seeking at that time.
I thought I heard Jane say that you guys did suggest that they look at a commercial zoning. I'm, is that?
I said, we told them it was an option.
Okay. All right.
We didn't recommend.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. That clarifies that for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And did the applicant have anything they felt they needed to step up or respond to that was brought up?
There were submissions.
Yeah, I need you at the microphone. If you're gonna address the board, you gotta be at the mic. Gotta get you on the record.
Rabbi Korek, still.
Thank you. Still. God willing?
God willing. Catching on. There are a few questions. I'm not sure if we should be addressing them, or you're gonna?
I have a number of questions that I'm gonna be asking staff about the project.
So if there's anything after that, we'll.
I'm just wondering if there was anything else that you felt that was addressed, you need to add?
If there's anything that's left.
Okay. We'll see if I swing and miss on that. How about that? So some of the things that I heard, first of all, staff's recommendation for mitigated negative deck as opposed to a full EIR was reviewed by council, I'm going to assume, and?
That's correct. And there were no environmental issues that exceeded or couldn't be mitigated. So M and D was the proper approach.
Okay, thank you. The question the gentleman asked about the level of service F going to level of service C with the installation of the divider that prevents the left turn movement onto Douglas off of Woodgrove and prevents the left turn movement out of Quail Oaks onto Douglas. You care to address that? We got our traffic guy stepping forward here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Richard Morin with Public Works. Essentially, what happens there is we have such really long delays, and the way the intersection level of service is calculated, it's on the delay movements. So when you're sitting at that, say, northbound, waiting to get out to Douglas, you have to cross the two eastbound lanes into the westbound lane to make that movement. So you're waiting gaps for really those three lanes. When you put a divider in, similar to Berg, if you watch it out there, you're really only waiting for a gap to make the right turn. So all you have to do is clear that first lane, get one gap, that allows that, and then you decrease the overall intersection delay from those turning movements.
Okay.
That's why it goes from an F to a C.
So it's the elimination of the left turn movement that decreases the amount of time people are waiting because they're, now they're just turning right. It doesn't take as long to turn right as it does to turn left.
Absolutely.
That's how it goes from level of service F to C.
From both the north and southbound directions.
Right. Okay. Then you might want to hang out for the next question. The line of sight question was raised about folks traveling eastbound on Douglas. With this building constructed as close to the roadway as it's being proposed, does that create a line of sight issue for vehicles in the number two lane, eastbound on Douglas, not being able to see vehicles in, on Woodgrove attempting to make that right turn? Or conversely, vehicles attempting to make that right turn not be able to see vehicles traveling eastbound in either the one or two lane on Douglas?
Yeah, I think probably a good thing to look at is the shut up on the screen there. You can see where that crosswalk sits today, so that back of that stop bar. That vehicle would be far enough forward to where you're gonna see it from the number two lane approaching Woodgrove, or if you're sitting on Woodgrove, to look left and see that approaching vehicle from the number two lane, or number one lane.
Okay. So you've looked at the line of sight issues and have no?
We will make sure and do that, but I can't imagine that that impacts it from the distance that it sits back today. I don't know if it's been looked at specifically, but I would say it should not have an impact there, and we'll make sure and address that.
Okay. And then there was a question asked about the fire clearance. The fire department looked at the turning radiuses associated and the through lane width associated with the revised plan that was submitted, and their conclusion was?
Well, you're talking to the wrong guy for the fire turning templates.
All right.
I don't know if you want to get someone else up here. But I do know that there are certainly standards that have to be met for the fire services.
They've looked at the layout, and they were fine with the whiffs, and okay, was making a three-point turn to get out of the site if they have to enter the site.
Okay. And the alternative they found was insufficient in terms of the width?
Right. We emailed Mike Ritter at South Placer Fire, and he said it didn't meet their minimum width requirements between the two buildings.
Okay. The gentleman who put together the Granite Bay Preservation Society, which is a new one to me, I hadn't heard about you guys, but welcome, he raised the issue of the height as he's looking out of his backyard across Douglas Boulevard, and what, my understanding is that the Habad has agreed to reorient the tall face so that instead of facing north, facing Douglas, it is, it will be facing west. And all that will go through design review if this project is approved, and it will have the higher point facing west, not facing Douglas. That would put the two-story portion of the building adjacent to Douglas. What is the height of the two-story? I was unable to read it on our slide. We have a slide that shows an elevation.
It was twenty-six feet, eight inches, or something.
About eleven feet down from what it is, the height of the three-story is. Somebody raised a question about possible accidents on Woodgrove because of insufficient distance for deceleration or acceleration from Douglas Boulevard down to the ingress/egress that is gonna be primarily utilized on Woodgrove. So somebody making a right turn southbound onto Woodgrove off of Douglas is traveling at such a rate of speed that they're likely to crash into somebody coming out of that project site. Did we analyze traffic circulation and traffic flow along those lines?
We did, and that's the reason why that driveway is located as southerly as possible, to keep it away from Douglas. So Public Works did look at that.
Okay. What is that approximate run from the front where you're on Douglas down to that?
It's, yes? About two-hundred feet.
About how far?
Two-hundred feet.
About two-hundred feet.
The architect is here.
Okay. All right.
Two-hundred.
Well, it's essentially the entire length of the property.
Yeah. As far as south as it can go without impeding the small wetlands strip on the southern border.
Wetlands that are there. Okay. Speaking wetlands, the question was raised about landscaping that currently exists on Woodgrove, the trees that are planted on Woodgrove right now, and what are we doing to make sure that the construction of the center does not destroy the trees as exist?
Yeah, they'll stay in place. There's no plans to change any of that landscaping or that, the wall, decorative wall, and we'll fence those trees at the drip line to try to keep construction out of there to leave the roots undisturbed.
Okay. And that's consistent with other projects when we have existing trees that we want to make sure that we preserve or take?
Standard mitigation.
Right. Okay. And, oh, this is not one for you, but one for me. Somebody made the comment, why did we bother updating the community plan in 2012 if it was just gonna be ignored? I will once again remind you, even though I know you know, because you were at the meetings, we didn't update anything associated with the land use element of the community plan. So all the land uses, the topic of the conversation today that were readopted in 2012 were the same land uses because the community said, contrary to what I recommended, the community said, we don't want a comprehensive review of land uses. We'd rather have them come one at a time, and that's why we're here today, because they're coming one at a time. So the land uses that are in place today are the same land uses that were assigned in 1989. Technically, they were assigned about 1987 because then we had to do all the EIR work on it in order to adopt a community plan based on an EIR, based on land uses that were assigned in about '87. So we're dealing with land uses today that were assigned about thirty-two years ago. So that's why we're having these conversations, whether it's this or another project that's gonna come on right down the way, that's why we're having that conversation. So with that, anything that either of you feel needed to be addressed, didn't get addressed by staff, that was raised in public comment? Nope? Nope? Yes? All right, make it quick, please.
I just want to point out regarding the height.
Your name again, sir?
Rabbi Korek.
Thank you.
Regarding the height, and that's something that's come up time and again, that the grade level of the building sits several feet lower than Douglas Boulevard, in contrast with other properties that are in parallel levels. So the height impact to the visual perspective is far less significant, it sounds.
And in one of our meetings that we had in discussing compromises on the project, you agreed that you will reorient that face?
Correct. And we're still in agreement with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We have, really, Sandy, we've closed the public hearing. We've asked.
I'm trying to round you out this whole thing.
All right. You're gonna, I'm giving you three minutes just because I love you, Sandy, but you're after the public hearing.
Well, I'm part of the presentation anyway. I want to.
Your name for the record.
Sandy Harris.
Thank you.
And I don't live in Greyhawk. I live in Granite Bay, which is my community, and I look at it as a big plan, and what happens in this part affects me over here eventually. But when the plan was updated, the reason that we didn't update the land use policies was because nobody in the community wanted to change. We love Granite Bay. We have zoning for high density, low density, medium density, commercial, business professional. There was nothing to change. We did it to bring it up to code with some of the mandates that were put on by the state. But we left the land use the way it is, contrary to what you just said. And this project, we love having it there. It's just too big for that site, and the variances that they're asking for are self-imposed. And that's all.
I seem to remember a meeting of this Board of Supervisors in 2012 where we handed you your very own copy of the community plan.
Yes.
Where I said, because we didn't do a comprehensive land use update because you asked that we not?
The community did.
Be prepared because they're gonna start coming, and we're gonna have to take them as one-offs instead of looking at the community until?
But that doesn't mean you can't follow the plan that we adopted as a community.
In 1989. Yes, you're right.
And if you look at the inside of that Granite Bay Community Plan, there are twenty-two names listed that met on a committee for two years, once a month in public meetings, and anybody who wanted to make changes had the opportunity to come, and everybody in Granite Bay got a notice that the plan was being updated if they wanted to make any changes. You sent out letters to, I think it was sixty-five hundred homeowners?
Mm-hmm.
And they had the opportunity.
And we received seventy-three land use requests, if you recall.
Yes, and they still, some of them got approved, some of them didn't.
No, we didn't approve any, Sandy. We didn't make any land use changes.
Well, then that was the community's wish to do that.
We didn't make, because, because the, well, anyway. I'll leave the history alone.
And you're supposed to represent our community.
We did not do a land use change update at all. After seventy-three requests we received. So, thank you, Sandy. You know it's only you I'm gonna make that exception for, right? Okay. Don't anybody try it. We are bringing this back to the board. You've heard probably more than you wanted to about all of this, but thank you very much for sitting through my part of it, anyway. So comments, questions from board members of staff, or just general thoughts? Ms. Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this, and thank you, everyone, for showing up and bringing your different perspectives. One of the things that I really did want to touch on very strongly was the concern that was raised with the perspective of anti-Semitism. And while I'm certain there are probably people online who, thank God, I have not seen their comments, I try to stay off Facebook, it's probably the most toxic thing you can do to yourself. What I'm hearing from people today is a concern, frankly, about the size and the placement of the project, and that is not at all different from pretty much every other project that ever comes in front of us as a board. And the dilemma that then we are always faced with as a board is, you know, what is too big? What is the appropriate amount? What is too tall? What is too dense? And that's, that is never an easy, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution that is easy And that's, that is never an easy, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution that is easy to point toward. What I would suggest is that I think there is opportunity for a smaller size structure on this property. I think there is an opportunity that would still allow all the uses that the rabbi is looking for, because I think it's really important to bring the Chabad house forward. I think one of the other issues that the neighbors, that I've heard from the neighbors, is just really the look, the context of it architecturally. And I note that there's about 5,000, roughly 5,000 Chabad institutions throughout the world. About 120 of them essentially pay homage to the Chabad house in Brooklyn. So I understand the idea of the reverence and trying to sort of replicate the look of, I don't want to call it the mothership, I'm sure there's a better term, but, you know, I'm kind of a Star Trek person. But, you know, what I'm suggesting is that we consider additionally making some changes to the architectural look of it. I like the repositioning of it. I think it makes sense. I would suggest that if the third story is actually unusable, Chris, as you suggest, that that height could come down, and that would really help with some of the community angst. So those would be my suggestions, maybe taking a look at smaller footprints of the structures that would then allow the appropriate turning radius that the fire department would require, bring the buildings down, and relocate them slightly on the property so they were not as directly on Douglas Boulevard as people are concerned about. Those are just my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Wagan.
When there's this kind of interest from the community, I always think it's important for us to at least express why we're thinking what we're thinking, because I think you're entitled to that. And so my thoughts briefly are that I'm going to support the recommendation by staff and the planning commission. To me, even with rezag zoning, this project almost perfectly is compliant with the community plan. It requires really only two, what I consider minor things that perfectly exist for the purpose, and that is the variances as it relates to the setbacks. The height variance could be done by our staff. It doesn't need to be approved by the planning commissioner or the board of supervisors because it's so small. But the side setbacks, from the boundaries exist, the variant requirements are that there are special attributes on the property that in order for a particular property owner to enjoy their property similarly to their neighbors, they need a variance. And with the wetlands there, it's like the perfect textbook planning example. And existing out there, of course, is an old fire station. So if you go up and down Douglas Boulevard, I have a high regard for the Granite Bay community plan and the actual standards that are set on Douglas specifically. I spent four years on the planning commission where most of the work that we did was related to the Granite Bay community plan, and the projects came forward as a result of that. I understand the community's enthusiasm for it, and I support it. But my planning perspective is that even with residential zoning, this project, again, is almost a perfect fit for the project. And I just want to add a little bit facetiously that anything you can do to help make Supervisor Yuler a better person will be a benefit to all of us. Just can't pass up that opportunity. Sorry, Kirk.
I should start by changing the company I keep. Any other board members have any comments? Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff. I know this has been a difficult project to work through, but I know staff has done everything they can to make this project worthwhile. And I know there's some variances, but that's part of our decision-making process. And so I'm going to support Supervisor Wagan's suggestion that we deny the appeal.
Supervisor Gore?
Yes, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you who've come to share your opinion and viewpoint. And I know this has been a very long process. As I look at a project like this, first of all, staff worked really hard with applicant to address the issues that were brought to concern. I feel like they've done so. But I look at this, and as Supervisor Wagan said, you know, this can't be used as a residential site. I mean, you can't do anything more on it. Nobody's going to live on that site. And you've got a good neighbor who's looking to make good use of that property, and it's an opportunity for them to do so with just some variances. I think that in general, it'll work with the plan. There's landscaping, and it's around open space that doesn't greatly affect neighbors. So I know this is a difficult decision, but I'm going to move forward and approve the plan.
Supervisor Wagan, your light's still on.
I apologize.
Okay. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I just, you know, as you know from your 10 years working with me, I always like to make suggestions about how I think things can be improved. Obviously, the tenor of the board is not to fall in line with the suggestions that I've made today. I want to make sure this project moves forward. I want to make sure our Chabad house has an appropriate place to grow and develop here in Placer County. So I will be supporting the board action today.
Okay. Do we have actually a motion since we're all talking about?
Yes, I'll speak.
I'm sorry.
Let's take the motion separately.
Oh, take the two motions separately? Okay, so, I'm sorry.
I have one more comment, Chairman.
Yes, EJ.
In regards to the rabbi agreeing to change the location of the facade of the building to face west. If that is, I'd like to change two conditions or modify them and read them into the record if you're ready.
Okay, yeah, please, go ahead.
Condition number 77, the last sentence, it talks about for the entry element facing Douglas Boulevard, strike out Douglas Boulevard and insert the parking lot.
Okay.
And condition number 80, which states architectural styles and materials of the buildings constructed on the site shall be in substantial conformance with elevations depicted in the plans dated August 10th, 2018, and submitted to the county as part of the minor use permit application. New extended sentence, except that the signature three-story element shown on the north facade of the community center shall be shifted to the building's west facade. Those would be the only changes we would request.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to first ask for a motion to deny the third-party appeal filed by the Granite Bay Community Association.
Second.
So we have motion Holmes, second Wagan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? None, thank you. Second motion to uphold the Planning Commission's November 8, 2018 decision to adopt the mitigation negative declaration monitoring, mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared by the Chabad of Roseville Project pursuant to CEQA.
Second.
We have motion Holmes, second Wagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? And then finally, we need a motion to uphold the Planning Commission's November 8, 2018 decision to approve the minor use permit variances and administrative approval for the Chabad of Roseville Project, subject to the conditions of approval as modified and set forth in attachment D or as set forth in attachment D, however subsequently modified by staff, to reflect the reorientation of the facade.
Second.
We have motion Holmes, second Wagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? None, thank you very much. Okay. At this point, yes, sir?
Close.
No, but I'll let you do that. Okay. We do have one department item that was added to the board's agenda by way of a supplemental agenda that was distributed. And so I'm going to ask County Council if she would please address that item.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the board, as we heard from Supervisor Montgomery, she is resigning from her position effective March 31st. There are two, there is one portion of our charter and one code that dictates how we proceed in this matter. The first is section 206 of the charter, which states that the vacancy will be filled with unanimous vote of the remaining members within 30 days of the occurrence. Failure to do so will result in the governor making the appointment. With respect to the vacancy, which is considered an unscheduled vacancy, the Mattie Act dictates how we proceed with this. We're required to post a notice of vacancy no earlier than 20 days before the date of vacancy and no later than 20 days after the vacancy. No appointment can occur until at least 10 working days after the posting has passed. In the staff report, we've tried to outline for you some basics on the timing. Naturally, this means the timing is extremely constrained by the time to make the appointment. The last day for appointment would be May the 1st. Given the two currently scheduled board meetings, our recommendation is that you direct staff to post the notice of vacancy immediately, effective tomorrow, May, March, pardon me, March 13th. Run that vacancy through March 29th. That's a Friday. Give the clerk of the board and chief of staff the opportunity then to sort through the applications and provide those applications to each board member, the entire packet, no later than April 3rd. The suggestion is that we schedule this for the first consideration of an appointment for April 9th. We've attached a copy of the notice of vacancy as attachment A and a copy of the application as attachment B. We've used the application that the governor uses when he makes appointments to committees and commissions with some modifications for local conditions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I really thank you for laying out the process. I actually want to bring up just kind of a logistical discussion for the board, which I think is pretty important. I think unlike the situation where Bonnie defeated Jack and had many months...
A long time.
...to prepare to, you know, bring staff on and all of that. I am concerned that if I leave the 31st and my district aides are given notice that matches up with that date of the 31st, that we're going to have a couple of weeks where basically the 5th district does not have any district director or district aides to manage kind of the ongoing daily processes that we all encounter in our districts. And so I would suggest that if we are to give notice to Jocelyn and to Lindsay upon my stepping down, that that notice, that two-week notice, which I think is a standard county notice, would be effective as of March 31st. Therefore, you guys would have time to identify a new supervisor who could come in, who could then meet with Lindsay, meet with Jocelyn, make a determination about whether or not they wanted to keep them on as aides or not. But I think it would allow us to not have really kind of a lot of things fall into an abyss in the, you know, week to two weeks between my departure and someone else coming on board. So really just kind of food for thought and just a suggestion as to how to move forward and to try to keep things moving fairly smoothly.
Okay.
If I could address that, I have the contract in front of me, and Supervisor Montgomery is correct that with her resignation on the 31st, under the contract, that would be actually the end of the contract for the district's aides. However, this board may certainly amend this contract to extend that term to a certain date if the board so wishes, and we could certainly schedule this for March 26th if that's the board's desire to take up a short-term extension for both aides.
Okay, so we would need then to bring it back to the board for formal action to modify the contract?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Supervisor Gore, you have a question or comment on this?
I'm not opposed to that, and I think that there's something wrong with allowing those staff that opportunity, especially if you've got a new supervisor, get them up to speed, this is what's going on. And then that supervisor can make that decision. It gives these employees an opportunity to see if they're a good fit for the new supervisor, and I think that's goodwill on our part.
Okay. Well, hearing no opposition, we'll go ahead and agendize that item for the board for the 26th.
Does the board have a direction as to the extension date?
I think we can have that conversation on the 26th as to what we think is an appropriate length of extension. Anything else? No? Okay. Then at this time, we would need a motion to direct the clerk of the board to post the vacancy. I'm sorry? Oh, public comment. I'm sorry, yeah. When the place clears out, I'm not sure if anybody, is there anybody that wishes to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? Okay. That being the case, we need a motion to direct the clerk of the board to post the vacancy effective tomorrow. We post the vacancy, is that what you're suggesting? Which will remain, the posting will remain open through the 29th. Applications must be submitted by the 29th, and then our board will look to possibly take action at our first meeting in April. Anything else? Nope? Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, I want to make a suggestion.
Oh, okay, yes, please, I'm sorry.
So as I took a look at the application, the one thing I noticed was that there's no, why do you want to do this? So it's got all the bio-information and interesting things like, you know, investigations and convictions and tax liens, which I hope nobody has when they're applying for the Board of Supervisors. That being said, there's nothing that actually says why they're interested in serving as a supervisor, which I think is pertinent information. So either, well, I have two suggestions. I think we do add that to the application. One thing I'd like to suggest, and we can decide to do this or not, is that in the past where I've served, we've actually done video interviews of applicants, and I've probably had five people already contact me about their interest in serving. I don't know maybe two of those folks, but I know that folks are going to want to individually meet with us as supervisors to share why they want to serve. I think it would be a nice opportunity if we did a video application or a video with a couple of questions of each of these applicants. It gives them an opportunity to tell each one of us why they're running personally, or why they're submitting their name personally. And then it allows us to put a face with a name versus a bunch of blanket applications that I don't know who these people are. So my suggestion would be to, we don't have to mandate it, but we could request that staff...
How about, if I may make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That as a part of the application, if applicants are interested in submitting a short video along with their application, that those videos would be distributed to board members. And in the video, my concern is us formalizing something that says, "We want you to answer the following questions." If the video is an option for them to introduce themselves to the board, tell us a little bit more about themselves and why they're running, and we just kind of leave it at that, and it's an optional thing that we attach to the application, they can submit that video to the clerk of the board.
That works for me, I think.
That work for you? County Council, have any?
No. Just then recap, what we're going to add to the application is a question saying, "Why do you wish to serve as a member of the Board of Supervisors?"
No, it's an, really, it's an opport, I'm sorry.
I do think there's a question on the application.
That was the first one, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, no, that's a fair question.
And then we'll have a note at the bottom saying, "If you wish to produce a short video, this will be distributed with the application to each board member."
Right, and the video of as to, you know, why you're interested in serving, et cetera.
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right.
And just to tag along on Bonnie's comments there, you've only heard from five people. I've heard from about two dozen so far. I think your board is going to have a lot of interest in this position, and so I'm glad that at this point you're leaving the discussion of how long the extension of that contract could be, because you may not get to a decision at that first meeting in April. So just a little food for thought.
All right. Any other questions or comments prior to taking it? Did we have a motion? I'm sorry, we were, no, we didn't, because I asked Bonnie her thoughts, so we need a motion now.
An approval.
All right. Was that a second, Robert?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion Holmes, seconded by Wagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? And direction was clear as to what it is? Okay, cool. All right, with that, we do have one county council item for closed session.
And then Kirk?
Yeah, and prior to, yeah, I mean, after, after we, go ahead.
So I'd like to close the meeting today in memory of Larry Wyatt. He's an active member of the Lincoln community, lifelong member, close personal friend, probably best known as being one of Delaware's most successful football coaches, maybe the most successful coach, sadly untimely death.
Young, young guy. That's right. Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, Ken.
The board will now adjourn to the closed session to consider two items of anticipated litigation.
Thank you. All right, we are back from closed session. Council report out.
The board met in closed session to consider two items of anticipated litigation. The board heard reports on both and provided direction on one. The second anticipated litigation was information only. That concludes closed session. Report out.
All right, and so there being no other items before the board today, we are adjourned to a special meeting on March 19th. That meeting will be at the Placer County Office of Education, which is 360 Nevada Street, Auburn, California, 95603, not 04. And we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Larry Wyatt. Thank you.